Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Please take your seats, folks. Still some people coming in. I guess Mr. Aloysius didn't bring his civics class here tonight. That's too bad. Okay, folks, we're gonna begin in about one minute. Please take your seats and quiet down. We're missing somebody from the finance committee? Oh, yeah, um, Jordan was... Please take your seats. Everyone, please take your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats and bring your voices down low. Please take your seats. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Christopher Mena, and it is my privilege to serve as town moderator and welcome you here tonight. Would the tellers seated in the auditorium, please raise your hands. Please look for the teller's hands behind you, folks, or in front of you, as the case may be. Would all town meeting members who are not already seated in front of the tellers, please come forward and take your seats in front of the tellers. If there are any individuals who are not elected town meeting representatives and do not have my specific permission to be seated in front of the tellers, please move to the seats behind the tellers. I have been asked to make a few public service announcements as we get underway. The annual Memorial Day Parade will take place on Monday, May 27th, starting from the Richard Carney Municipal Office Building. The parade will form at 9:00 a.m. and begin at 9:30, proceeding to the town center for the memorial ceremony and concluding at Mountain View Cemetery. All veterans and active military personnel are welcome to march in the parade. Please contact Director of Public Facilities Angela Snell for more information. Next, Selco is engaged in replacing all the street lighting on the ramps located at the Route 290 and West Main Street exits. The work is progressing and should be nearly 50% complete by the end of this week. The remaining schedule of work is as follows. Today, they'll be working from 9:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m., so on your way home, if anybody needs to go near those exits, don't be surprised if one of the ramps is closed. There will be no work taking place next week during Memorial Day week, and the following two or three weeks after next week, the weeks of June 2nd through 6th, June 9th through 13th, and if necessary, June 16th through 20th. Between Sunday and Thursday of each week, there will be two nights per week of work on those, installing new lighting in those ramps between 9:00 p.m. and 4:00 a.m. For reasons of safety, at least one of the affected ramps will have to be closed during the hours when this work is being done. The Mass Department of Transportation and Selco apologize for ramp closures. At least we have two ramps, two exits in town and not just one. While we're on the subject of transportation, Mass DOT would like to invite all of us to a public hearing on June 24th at 7:00 p.m. in the Selectmen's Room of the Richard Carney Municipal Office Building. The purpose of this meeting is to provide the public with an update on the conceptual master plan for the Route 20 corridor in Shrewsbury that is being prepared by Mass DOT. The goal of the Route 20 conceptual master plan is to develop recommended improvements along the Route 20 corridor in Shrewsbury to accommodate all users and to accommodate anticipated growth and to address existing safety issues. The meeting will focus on the section of Route 20 from Centec Boulevard West to the Worcester City Line. Following the presentation, Mass DOT staff will be available to answer your questions. Next, Town Meeting Member Melissa Hollenbach has an announcement regarding an upcoming recycling day. Missy, microphone, please.
Hi, Melissa Hollenbach, Precinct 9. The four towns, Shrewsbury, Northboro, Westboro, and Grafton, will be having a multi-town recycling event on Saturday, June 22nd, at the Tufts Facility in North Grafton. There will be collecting electronics, styrofoam textiles, and also check the town website. We'll be having some more updates for other items. This is a recycling event that's sponsored by the town, all the towns. This is helping them to get DEP points to help pay for our recycling programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. Okay, let's begin our official business. I'm advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum, and the 2019 Annual Town Meeting is hereby called to order. I have examined the warrant and the constable's return of service, and both are in order. I ask for your unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return. Hearing no objections, it is so voted unanimously. Thank you. It is my intention to begin this meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Those who wish to join me are now invited to rise, and please remain standing for our National Anthem after the pledge. I pledge allegiance... Please remain standing. Our National Anthem will be performed this evening by members of the Shrewsbury High School Acapella Choir under the direction of Choir Director Michael LaPamardo. Please welcome Fiona Ingersoll, Neeti Ramesh, Chloe Carlton, Harini Shanmugam, John Nichols, Dan Stamaris, John Miwanda, and Tommy Wang. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. LaPamardo and students. Please be seated. At this point in our meeting, I usually ask you to remain standing to honor the memory of any town meeting members who have passed away since our last meeting. I am not aware of any such individuals who have left us since our special town meeting last October, but if I'm incorrect on this point, please contact me following tonight's meeting so I can acknowledge any deceased town meeting member when we reconvene on Wednesday evening. I would, however, like to mention that one of our long-serving town meeting members and good friend to all, Helen McLaughlin of Precinct 10, is not here tonight due to ongoing health problems. I know that Helen would be watching us tonight if she were able to, but in any event, I trust I have your permission to convey to Helen and her family our best wishes for her speedy return to good health and return to town meeting. I now call on Town Clerk Sandra Wright to administer the oath of office to all newly-elected and re-elected town meeting representatives.
Would all newly-elected and re-elected town meeting members, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my ability, perform the duties of town meeting member in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury and the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you, and a special welcome to those of you who are new to town meeting. It is now my pleasure to introduce the individuals who are with me on the stage, beginning on my far right, the members of the Finance Committee. It's always hard for me to see everybody as we start, but we have Mark Murray, Mark Adler, Jordan Rubin, Gene Buddenhagen, John Segelnik, Aaron Howard, State Representative Hannah Kane, Judy Vedder, Chair Patrick Pitney. Thank you all for being here tonight. Seated next to Mr. Pitney, our Assistant Town Manager and Economic Development Coordinator, Kristin Lass, Town Council Steven Medaus, and to my immediate right, Town Clerk Sandy Wright. To my immediate left is Town Manager Kevin Mizikar, followed by members of the Board of Selectmen, Chairperson Mo DiPaolo, Vice Chair Beth Cassavant, and our newest Selectman, John Samia. Selectmen John LeBeau and Jim Kane are not able to be here tonight due to their work commitments. Before moving from the stage to introduce some other folks sitting in the auditorium, I'd like to recognize the service of Finance Committee Member Gene Buddenhagen, whose term is expiring next month. Gene has served on the committee since 1999, including several terms as chairman. Please join me in thanking Gene for his long and dedicated service. Next, allow me to introduce several other town officials and department heads who are seated in the front of the auditorium. These dedicated individuals are here tonight to answer our questions and assist us in any way they can. Would you please stand and be recognized as I call your names, and I'll apologize in advance for leaving out anyone. Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joseph Sawyer; Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Amy Cluter; Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Patrick Collins. We have another Assistant Superintendent coming online on July 1st, but she's well-known to all of us. Current Sherwood Middle School Principal Jane Lizotte. Jane, welcome to the central office. Members of the Shrewsbury School Committee, Chair Jason Palich, Vice Chair Sandra Fritz, Dale McGee, John Wensky, and newly-elected member Lindsay Heffernan, welcome. Please join me in congratulating the individuals who were recently elected or re-elected at the annual town election on May 7th. Selectman John LeBeau and newly-elected Selectperson John Samia; School Committee members Dale McGee and Lindsay Heffernan; Housing Authority Member Paul Campanello; and Library Trustees Nancy Gilbert, Jeffrey Billingham, and Anne-Marie Cronenberg. Congratulations to all of you. There are many other town meeting members here tonight who serve the town on a variety of boards and committees. All of you have our thanks for your service to our town. On my left in the front of the room are our town department heads and other key town employees. Please stand as I call your names so you can be recognized. Police Chief Jay Hester; Fire Chief Jim Vona; Selco General Manager Michael Hale; Director of Public Works, Jeff Howland; Director of Public Facilities, Angela Snell; Public Buildings Division Manager Keith Baldinger; Highway Division Manager Nick Repetka; Parks, Cemetery, and Grounds Division Manager Kevin Esposito; Water and Sewer Superintendent Bob Tuzeski; Building Inspector Patty Sheehan; Town Planner Bernard Cahill; Assistant Town Planner Chris McGoldrick; Business and Management Analyst in the Town Manager's Office, David Snowden; Health Department Director Karen Clark; Chief Information and Technology Officer John Covey; Library Director Ellen Dolan; Human Resources Coordinator Christina Anderson; Council on Aging Director Sharon Jaeger; Town Accountant Mary Thompson; Treasurer and Tax Collector Laurie Godette; Town Assessor Chris Reedy; Emergency Management Director Steve Rocco; Animal Control Officer Keith Elms; and Veteran Services Director Justin Souza. Again, my apologies to anyone whose name I've neglected to mention. Thank you to all of our department heads and your staff members for your outstanding service to our town all year long. While we're recognizing our terrific town employees, I'd like to take an additional moment to recognize one of our longest-serving department heads who will be retiring next month. Water and Sewer Superintendent Bob Tuzeski has served in this very important position since 1989. I think that's 30 years. Leading a dedicated team who are responsible for our town's excellent water and sewer services. As with so many of our town's services, Shrewsbury's Water and Sewer Department is the envy of our neighboring communities in large part because of the outstanding work of Bob Tuzeski and his staff. Bob, thank you for your outstanding service to our town. This town meeting is being broadcast live on Shrewsbury Government Access Television, Channels 30 and 330. In addition to welcoming the viewers at home and thanking them for their interest in our town meeting, I ask you to join me in thanking the good people at Shrewsbury Media Connection, General Manager Mark Sarah and his staff members, his many staff members who are here tonight, for all their good work in bringing this meeting into your homes and cable boxes tonight. Thank you all very much, SMC. Before we begin to consider the 37 articles in this year's warrant, I'd like to review several of the procedural rules that govern town meeting and that I'd asked you to be mindful of tonight. First, each town meeting member upon checking in should have received a hot pink or hot orange sticker, which must be displayed prominently on your person throughout the meeting. Even if you take your coat off because it's too hot in here, which is fine, just put your sticker on your shirt, please. If and when we have to take a standing vote on any motion, your sticker must be visible to the tellers in order for your vote to be counted. We will consider the warrant articles in the order in which they are printed in the warrant, unless otherwise voted by this body. All speakers must be recognized by the moderator. When you are recognized, please stand in your place and wait for a microphone to be passed to you before speaking, or come to the front of the room if you wish to speak from the lectern down below. You must begin your comments by stating your name and precinct number, even if I'm able to identify you by name, and even if you've spoken before. Please address all questions and comments to me. I will refer any question to the appropriate person for response. You may ask one or two follow-up questions on the same subject with the permission of the moderator, but if there are others waiting to be recognized, I may ask you to take your seat until others have had a chance to speak. While we're on the subject of recognizing speakers, and for the benefit of those of you here who are not town meeting members, I want to call your attention to the rules and customs for non-town meeting members who wish to address this meeting. If an individual or group wishes to make a formal presentation for or against a particular article on the warrant, they should contact me in advance of the meeting and request permission to do so. If you haven't notified me in advance of the meeting and asked to be recognized during the meeting from the back of the auditorium, I will try to call on you after all town meeting representatives have had the opportunity to speak or until a motion to end debate has been passed, and the question must proceed to an immediate vote. Our town meeting procedures are governed by three main authorities: the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the general bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury, and Cushing's Manual of Parliamentary Practice, 1954 Edition. We will also have the expert assistance of Town Council Steven Medaus in reviewing any legal or procedural issues that arise during this meeting, and I want to thank Steven in advance for the advice that he will be providing. During the discussion of each article, I will ask the Chair of the Finance Committee, Patrick Pitney, for the committee's recommendation on the motion, as is required by state law. And following the discussion of each article, I will indicate whether a majority or greater number of votes is required to pass the motion. I will then call for a voice vote in the first instance, and if I am uncertain whether the motion passes or is defeated by voice vote, or if at least seven town meeting members raise their hands and challenge the sufficiency of the vote, I will ask for a standing vote to eliminate any doubt. If you have not already done so, please silence any cellphone or other electronic device in your possession. If you must make or receive a call or any other communication during the meeting, please remove yourself to the lobby in consideration of others. And finally, I want to remind you that this is not a forum for the discussion of personalities, and no personal criticism or attack of any individual, group, or organization will be tolerated. We are a duly-elected and convened legislative body, and our tradition and rules require civil discourse and courteous demeanor and presentation by all participants. Civility at town meeting is not an option. It is what we expect of ourselves and each other. Anything to the contrary will be ruled out of order immediately. I'd like to begin the formal consideration of the warrant by making the following procedural motion. I move to adjourn each session of this town meeting at 10:30 p.m. or 11:00 a.m. I move to adjourn each session of this Town Meeting at 10:30 PM, or upon the completion of any motion which is pending before this meeting at 10:30 PM, whichever time occurs later. Do I have a second for this motion? The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, and it requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the procedural motion please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. And now, at long last, we proceed to the warrant, which is contained in the cream-colored booklet entitled "Report and Recommendations of the Finance Committee", which all members should have received in the mail, and copies of which are also available here tonight. Looking at the booklet, following some helpful materials provided by the Finance Committee in the front of the book, the actual warrant articles begin on page 16. Please turn to page 16, and let's begin with Article 1. Is there a motion with respect to Article 1, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 1.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 1 has been moved and seconded to receive the reports of Town Committees. The Committees reporting to us tonight are the Beale Early Childhood Center Building Committee, the Beale Reuse Committee, and the Electronic Voting Study Committee. The Beale Early Childhood Center Building Committee report will be given by... School Committee Chair, Vice Chair Sandra Fritz. Sorry, Sandy, you told me that the other night and I forgot already. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. As Vice Chair of the Beale School Building Committee, it is my pleasure to update Members of our Town Meeting on the progress we achieved since our last special Town Meeting in fall of 2018. By way of reminder, the Beale Building Committee was established by a vote of the special Town Meeting on April 13th, 2016. The Committee is comprised of eight members of our community in addition to myself, including Chair Jim Kane, representing the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager Kevin Mizikar, Superintendent of Schools Dr. Joseph Sawyer, Beale Early Childhood Center Principal Chris Girardi, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations Patrick Collins, Public Buildings Division Manager Keith Baldinger, Former Superintendent of Public Buildings and now Community Member Bob Cox, and Community Member Aaron Boucher. You may recall that on October 22nd, 2018, this body gave unanimous support, less one vote, of the proposal presented... On November 6th, 2018, by a two-to-one margin, Shrewsbury voters declared their support for a new Beale Elementary School to be built at Lake Street just south of Route 9. With the funding in place from our town, in the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the Building Committee began a regular and frequent series of meetings with the project team from Lammero Pagano and Associates, the project architect, and PMA consultants, who is our owner-project manager. Our immediate focus was to select a contractor through a competitive and open process consistent with state statute and MSBA guidelines. After a thorough vetting, the Building Committee voted unanimously to engage the construction firm of Fontaine Brothers. Fontaine's experience in school construction is superior, and their performance as the contractor on our town's public library was excellent. With the contractor selected and design underway, the Building Committee, Town Administration, and Town Council, along with our state delegation of Senator Mike Moore and Representative Hannah Kane, worked diligently with the state officials to acquire the Glavin site. The closing on the Glavin property occurred on March 20th, 2019. In just two weeks, the Building Committee will file with the MSBA our 60% construction drawings. To date, the project remains on time and on budget. Our Building Committee meets regularly, and all meetings are posted and open to the public. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June 4th, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall. And in closing, I would like to ask all of you to join us for the new Beale school groundbreaking, which will happen at the Glavin Center on Lake Street on Monday, July 22nd, at 8:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. The Beale Reuse Committee report will be presented by Committee Chair Mo DiPaolo.
The Building Reuse Committee was created by the Board of Selectmen to develop recommendations for the reuse of the Beale property. The Members of the Committee and myself, Bob Cox, Keith Baldinger, Mary Beth Lynch, Paul Campanello, Angela Snell, and Brian Beaton. The Committee started meeting in March of 2018. We had several meetings on the subject of Beale reuse since that time. We had one public hearing. We had a public meeting, which turned into a public discussion that was very productive. But the Committee discovered that its work was a bit early in the process and decided to wait until the funding and authorization for the new Beale school was approved by the voters. In the meantime, the Planning Department sought and was awarded a $50,000 visioning grant, excuse me, for the Town Center and the Beale reuse project, which provided... reuse, which provided access to professional assistance that was sorely needed to do the reuse effort. The Committee met on several occasions with the consultant, Horstley Witten, Mass Development, and the planning staff to provide input during the study and to review and comment on the draft report, which has led to the final, which should be coming out shortly. We also met with the Historic Discrimination and the Planning Board. The Planning Department has also applied for a second Mass Development Technical Assistance Grant to help formulate an RFP for the Beale property's disposition. The issues that are being considered in relation to the Beale reuse include possible rezoning with a possible overlay district, whether the land should be sold as one private parcel or divided into a public and private parcel, whether Beale should be reused, torn down, or it should be partially torn down and renovated. Also, if the site should have restrictive uses, and whether this should be a true mixed-use development with a housing component, such as commercial on the first floor and apartments above. Our consultant has told us that any viable project on that site more than likely is going to include some type of a housing component. So going forward, there are going to be more public hearings and presentations to be held when the visioning study is complete and during the development of the RFP. With the plan for the new Beale to be occupied in August of 2021, the Committee would like to have our work completed in the spring of 2020. From there, the town would work on issuing an RFP and evaluating proposals and be able to complete the seal of the Beale property in October or November of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Before we leave the subject of the schools and go on to our third committee report, I was informed a few minutes ago that I made a mistake in identifying the officers of the School Committee, and I never want to leave anybody with that misinformation. The current Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee is Sandy Fritz, and the current Vice Chair of the School Committee is John Wensky. So my apologies for the misnomers before. See, I'm a lifetime learner. Okay, the third report and final committee report will be the Electronic Voting Study Committee, and that report will be presented by Committee Chair Brian Moss.
Hi, my name is Brian Moss, Chair of the Town Meeting Electronic Voting Study Committee. In last year's Town Meeting, a citizen's petition was approved to form a committee to study the viability, costs, and applicability of using electronic voting for Town Meetings, and to report its findings and recommendations to the town. The Electronic Voting Study Committee had eight members. I want to thank the Committee Members tonight for their hard work and dedication over the last year. The Members are Town Moderator Chris Main, Town Clerk Sandy Wright, Chief Information Officer John Covey, Selectwoman Beth Cassavant, and Town Meeting Members Patrick Convery, Nina Mohanka, and Donna O'Connor. The Committee was tasked with making a full review of the electronic voting process. In doing so, the Committee reviewed how other communities use this technology, solicited information from vendors and online sources, and conducted several in-depth presentations on the specific capabilities of three of the top vendors currently being used in the Commonwealth: votes, option technologies, and PCI. Each system was reviewed using several criteria: viability, capability, ease of use, functionality, and cost. Although not choosing a technology per se, the Committee still wanted to make a comparative analysis of the value of each system. As far as the longer list of pros and cons of electronic voting mentioned by vendors and other towns, our Committee was able to narrow down and identify those most relevant and meaningful to our Shrewsbury Town Meeting. Of the pros offered by electronic voting, one of the most significant is accountability to voters. Our Committee concluded that making recorded votes available to Town Meeting Members and all citizens is a benefit. An electronic voting system has the ability to show immediate voting results, roll-call information, and attendance at the meeting from a central screen, and these results can be published at the Town website for future reference to Town voters. Of the cons of electronic voting, one of the most significant is cost. Whenever a department is considering a technological solution, the benefits of that system must be weighed against its costs, particularly in light of other technology requests in the upcoming budget for Town Departments, public safety, and the school system. One potential model of electronic voting would carry an estimated $20,000 per year price tag, more if we had more meetings that year. From this review, the Committee had four recommendations. One, for the town not to pursue an electronic voting system at this time. Two, that the town reconsider electronic voting in the future. Three, if an electronic voting system is considered in the future, the Committee recommends having a pilot session at a Town Meeting to further evaluate the technology. And if a pilot of an electronic voting system is considered, the Committee recommends a survey be sent to Town Meeting Members after the pilot for feedback. So in conclusion, electronic voting is being used in several Massachusetts communities. These systems provide the potential benefits of accountability and efficiency, however, given the town's current budget climate. And with competing priorities among all departments, the Committee concluded that the benefits of electronic voting system do not justify the costs at this time. For more information, including the Committee's final report and supplementary documents referenced by the Committee, please visit the Committee's webpage on the Town or Shrewsbury website. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions or comments with respect to the motion under Article 1? And please remember that the motion asks you to approve, to receive these reports, not to approve them. Are there any questions at all about that procedural issue? Okay, there being none. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee does recommend Article 1.
Okay, there being no further questions, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of receiving these three committee reports as presented please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 2, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 2.
The printed motion under Article 2 has been moved and seconded. This is an annual action by Town Meeting to appoint the trustees of the Wright &amp; Harlow Charitable Trust Fund for the coming year. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 2.
Okay, and the names of the individuals who have been nominated to serve as trustees of the Wright &amp; Harlow Charitable Trust are printed on page 16 of your booklet. Are there any questions or comments with respect to the motion under Article 2? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 2 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 3, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 3.
The printed motion under Article 3 has been moved and seconded. This article seeks to amend several sections of the town's consolidated personnel bylaw. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 3.
Personnel Board Chair Teresa Flynn will provide a brief explanation regarding this motion. Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I want to recognize that I'm joined tonight by longstanding Board Members Tony Froyo and Bob Cashman, and I will absolutely call them up to the podium if you ask me questions that I can't answer. Otherwise, I'm pleased to present Personnel Board's recommendations under Article 3 of the annual Town Meeting warrant. Applicable details are outlined in our May 7th memo to Town Meeting Members. Out of respect for your time, I'll briefly summarize the recommendations outlined before addressing any questions. Our recommendation is to amend the personnel bylaw to shift responsibility of amending the classification and compensation plans from Town Meeting to the Personnel Board. As we all know, the Town Manager continues to work at improving organizational efficiencies and preparing us for the future. Currently, Town Meeting has responsibility to create position titles and set salaries. Given that there are 240 Town Meeting Members who do not meet frequently and who are not involved in daily personnel matters, there have been challenges in recent years that have adversely affected our ability to recruit and retain qualified employees for the Town of Shrewsbury. For example, we have been unable to respond when our wages are not competitive. Recruitment for a Treasurer Collector, Assistant Treasurer Collector, and Benefits Coordinator have taken months, and multiple final candidates declined offers. The Assistant Building Inspector recruitment has taken over a year, requiring an alternative staffing approach. We have been unable to reshape the water, sewer, form, and responsibilities to be consistent with other DPW changes because the classification and compensation plans limit our ability to evolve the role. The current compensation system prevents changes from being made to individuals without changing an entire class, and this prohibits the evolution of department head responsibilities, such as Building Inspector, Engineer, DPW, and Assessor. In formulating our recommendations, we surveyed the practices of 39 other towns, including those we standardly include as comparable communities. 62% do not require Town Meeting to approve classification and compensation plans. We have been talking to you for several years about the fact that we have lost candidates for succession planning, and our ability to fill department head positions is extremely challenging. The proposed bylaw changes will enable us to make more timely decisions and better assist Town Management in critical recruitment and retention efforts. We note that recommendations made by the Personnel Board in the past have been routinely approved by Town Meeting. It is important to note that this change does not provide for additional funding outside of the budget approved by Town Meeting. Town Meeting will retain its appropriation authority while enabling the town's executive leadership to act as needed. Lastly, I would like to note that the proposed step in general salary increases under Article 4 will not be formally presented if these changes are approved because these changes eliminate the requirement for salary increases to be approved by Town Meeting. However, the information is included in our letter and can serve as reference. Mr. Moderator, the Personnel Board is pleased to take any questions and otherwise respectfully requests approval of its recommendations and report under Article 3 for fiscal year 20.
Mrs. Flynn, thank you, Members of the Personnel Board. Are there any questions or comments with respect to Article 3? Ms. Hollenbach.
Melissa Hollenbach, Precinct 9. Correct me if I'm wrong, in the history of public employees, people worked for towns in the state because of the benefits in the past? And things have changed in the world now? And now we're being forced to be much more competitive, not only with other towns, but with industry itself. Are we having any plans to really be more competitive with wages? I mean, I'm looking at Article 4 and all the changes, and the pricing, the wages people will be getting, and thinking that Whole Foods is now paying $15 an hour, and some of our town employees who have pretty considerable positions are not paying that. So is this going to give you more leeway to do things like that? To be more like a corporate HR company where you're really able to do more to get quality employees or just heck, to get employees?
Response, Mrs. Flynn?
Somewhat. I think we're still, the fiscal limitations still exist, but I do think that this does allow us to look at an individual that has extensive career experience, who might fall somewhat outside of our set classification schedule, and allow us to make more timely or real-time decisions in order to get those people. I mean, internal equity is still a priority. We have commissioned a consultant to do a full compensation study. As we know, several department heads have and will continue to retire. So I do think that there will be future discussions and recommendations, and potentially, the ask on how we can be more competitive in those areas. But this certainly doesn't enable us to make widespread change, but I do think it will help.
Further questions or comments on Article 3? Further questions or comments on Article Three? Oh, Mr. Byrne.
I'm sorry about that. It's the reflection that I'm getting off the gentleman who's sitting in front of me. I'll never get home safely tonight, I'm sure. My name's Kevin Byrne. I'm from Precinct Six. Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting Members, in the number of recent years that I've sat out here amongst you as a Town Meeting representative, and in the inordinate numbers of years where I stood where you're standing now, Mr. Maynor, we always started out, you know, the Town Meeting with the amendments to the personnel bylaw. When I would look from that stage, Mr. Maynor, out here, early in the Town Meeting process, eyes would glaze over, okay? People had not really a clue what all of the details of this were. Years back, they used to take the amendments to it, put them on the edge of the stage, and say, "Any of you suckers who want this, it's right here, okay? This is something that years ago should have candidly have been transferred, not to denigrate, you know, the authority and the ability that we have, but in this, this is something that has to be looked at on a regular, consistent basis by the Town Manager and by the Board, and more importantly, it deserves that type of detailed attention." I'm in favor of this.
Further questions or comments on Article Three? Yes, ma'am.
Can I comment on how I'm a little offended about glazed over?
Just go ahead. I was gonna say, don't worry, Kevin, we'll get to the sexy stuff in a little while.
Gail Sokolowski, Precinct Six. Just, I have a comment on what Town Meeting Member Hollenbach said. Yes, we want to be more competitive salary-wise, but the town is still obligated to offer those benefits that you referred to. There have been changes to the retirement law, but the health insurance benefits are still a very costly issue for the town. My question is, how would the Personnel Board, if they were having trouble hiring, say, a new treasurer, how would they be flexible and fluid? How would that process go? Would they just say, "Oh, we need to give this person fifteen thousand dollars more a year"? How do you see that process happening that would help you out?
Response, Mrs. Flynn or Mr. Mizikar?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, right now, as we have a five-step system across any classification and compensation range, and we are bound to set numbers or provide salaries specifically at those numbers that are approved by this body, you know, to the penny. So not only would not having to adhere to a specific number give us flexibility among the steps, allow us to find a sweet spot, you know, for offers based on experience, if we had continued trouble within the existing range, and say, the date was, you know, a week and a half from now, we would be able to quickly survey communities in the area, understand if we're within the market range, and make adjustments where appropriate. If those were deemed to be made, under the current scenario, we'd have to wait at best until a fall Town Meeting, and a fall special Town Meeting. I don't think the calling of a special Town Meeting in and of itself for a single position would ever merit this body's time. And beyond the recruitment of a specific position, I find myself in situations where we may have a position title where an employee chooses to leave our employment for various reasons, and we're forced to hire someone back into that exact position title and have them perform similar duties, just because that's what's available at our disposal. We lose some of our creativity to say, "Well, our resources would be better served in another department or just a slightly different role based upon the skill sets that exist in the department that may have not been there a few years ago." So we're really, we don't have the ability to do that. We don't, we have to use each and every, only the titles that are provided to us through the current classification and compensation system. So I think those specific examples is how this could help us better manage the day-to-day operations of the town.
Further questions or comments on Article Three? Yes, sir, Mr. Scott?
Steve Scott, Precinct Nine. I want to make sure I'm clear on something. We're dealing within the confines of an annual budget, correct, Mr. Moderator? And if exceptions are made in the recruitment process where it's deemed that we need an additional fifteen or twenty K to hire the appropriate person, does that mean we're taking it from another bucket? Because that number is set here at Town Meeting in terms of salaries and expenses for the year, correct?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
So, the Town Meeting sets budgetary controls at the one, two, three salary levels for personnel, so it's not on a position-by-position basis. So if we're in an extended recruitment, therefore salary may not be being paid or wouldn't be being paid upon the vacancy, so that would give us flexibility within that position and budget. But Town Meeting is not giving up any additional authorities that it has right now. So if it's in the bottom line of the salary and wages portion of any given department, we would have flexibility with that in that range, but it's not limited to a salary assigned to a particular position.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article Three? Okay, there being none. And this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes by a majority vote. Article Four, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article Four.
The printed motion under Article Four has been--
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, I've gotta go through my little-- The printed motion under Article Four has been moved and seconded. This article seeks to make certain amendments to the town's classification and compensation plan and consolidated personnel bylaw. Mr. DiPaolo?
Town Meeting Members, the Board and the Finance Committee recommend that this motion, this article be defeated because of the passage of Article Three. This is no longer needed.
While we're at it, Mr. Pitney, do you want to announce the vote of the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee does not recommend Article Four.
Okay, and is there any further explanation that is requested by either Mrs. Flynn or Mr. Mizikar? Okay, just to clarify what we're doing here and make sure the Town Meeting Members understand the reason for the recommendation for a no vote.
Yep. So this article was presented in the old format, in that Article Four, as it was drafted, would have revised the classification and compensation plans upon the recommendation of the Personnel Board, but those authorities have just transferred to the Personnel Board, so effective July first, the Personnel Board can set the compensation ranges and classification of positions.
Thank you. Further questions or comments with respect to Article Four? Okay, I don't see any hands. If there are, oh, Mrs. Goldman. I always do that to you. I don't see you when you're waving your hand so nicely. Mrs. Goldman?
Roberta Goldman, Precinct Eight. I'm, just for point of clarification, now that the management is turned over to the Personnel Board itself, who takes care of the actual observations and handling of all the employees? Is that the Town Manager, or is that? I know it may not be within these articles, but I'm curious as how that is managed.
Response, Mrs. Flynn or Mr. Mizikar?
So, the day-to-day operations have and will remain within the Town Manager's office, so we have all personnel files and processes, and make recommendations, and receive formal action through the Personnel Board, but the day-to-day will remain in our office.
Are there any further questions or comments regarding Article Four? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Four, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
And the motion is defeated by a majority vote. Article Five, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article Five.
The printed motion under Article Five has been moved and seconded. This article seeks authorization for the town to raise the sum of fifty-one hundred dollars to pay the expense, the medical expenses of retired disabled police officers and firefighters. Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends Article Five.
Are there any questions or comments with respect to Article Five? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article Six, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article Six.
The printed motion under Article Six has been moved and seconded. This article seeks authorization for the town to accept the sum of nine-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-three dollars from the Commonwealth under Chapter Ninety Local Transportation Aid Funding Program, and to transfer these funds to the Highway Department for the repair and maintenance of the town's streets, sidewalks, storm drains, and related expenses. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article Six.
Are there any questions or comments with respect to Article Six? Okay, everybody wants to accept the money, I guess. There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article Seven.
I move the substitute motion on the gray sheets and the handouts that headed Substitute Motion Color Guide, May twenty, twenty nineteen.
Okay, the substituted motion under Article Seven has been moved and seconded. This article seeks the transfer of the sum of twenty-one thousand dollars within the fiscal year twenty nineteen operating budget for the, to come from the following accounts that are listed on the gray sheet titled Substituted Motion for Article Seven, and to fund the two items, line items described in that same gray sheet. Questions or comments? Mr. Mizikar?
Briefly, Town Meeting Members, the funding move, the four thousand dollars move from the salaries to the expenses in the Treasurer Collector's Department was used as we had recruitment issues with the assistant treasurer collector position, and we backfilled with a consultant. And the seventeen thousand dollars from the Treasurer Collector and Council on Aging combined to election and registration covers the additional costs associated with the additional election ballot question at the fall for the Beal Elementary School project.
Questions or comments with respect to Article Seven? No hands? Yes, sir. Is it Mr. Sheikh? Wow.
Rashid Sheikh, Precinct Ten. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to just understand, we are moving from the Treasurer Collector's Level One, Two, Three, Four Thousand to the same department in Level Four, Five, Six, Four Thousand. So is it fair to understand that we are paying more, rightfully so, to the higher-level positions, and maybe less to the lower-level positions, which we're giving examples that we may not be, you know, part of the market? Or was this, this extra fund was going to be there no matter what? So I just want to understand that.
Mr. Mizikar?
Actually, the transfer of this four thousand is from the personnel salary and wages into expenses, so non-personnel salary and wages for contracted services rather than different position levels, so from salaries and wages to professional services.
Further questions or comments on Article Seven? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the substituted motion under Article Seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Articles, Article Eight?
I move the printed motion under Article Eight.
Okay, the printed motion under Article Eight has been moved and seconded to see if the town will accept the provisions of Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and a Half, if you can believe it, of the Massachusetts General Laws establishing water services as an enterprise fund effective for fiscal year twenty twenty, and to raise the sum of two million, three-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-nine dollars from departmental receipts, Water Department receipts, and appropriate those funds in the manner described on page twenty-nine of your book. Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, I just wanted to provide a few comments generally on enterprise funds, which are an option available to us for financial management purposes through Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and a Half. Proposals for enterprise funds at this Town Meeting include Article Eight, Nine, and Ten. And an enterprise fund is merely a mechanism of how we manage funds. They provide a means to separately account for municipal services of a proprietary nature, that is, those services provided to individual customers for a charge in a manner similar to a private business. And the town uses, utilizes Section Fifty-three F and a Half Enterprise Fund to manage our current solid waste operation, so you may be familiar with it from previous Town Meetings. The town sewer operations are managed through a special legislation that required the management of funds, similar to an enterprise funds, but not exact, but we follow the same concept for that utility as well. The goal here is really transparency and to effectively manage the funding related to our utility accounts. Water Services revenues as currently managed are technically unprotected from being used to fund non-water expenses. The Town Meeting has been very diligent in the past to return each fall and vote to separate any unexpended Water Department balances and any excess revenues so that they will be retained for their intended purposes. However, by establishing this enterprise, the customers of the water system and other utilities proposed this evening will be assured that the rates and fees that they are charged are spent to maintain and improve those systems alone. Further, Town Meeting will be able to focus on the legislative matters at hand rather than assisting in various accounting tasks that can be handled through the adoption of this, or acceptance of this aspect of the general laws. Finally, I note that the Commonwealth Department of Revenue and the Government Finance Officers Association, which was established in nineteen oh six and represents public finance officials throughout the United States and Canada, consisting of more than twenty thousand federal, state, and local officials, recommend the use of enterprise funds as proposed this evening for the management of utility accounts. Specifically related to the water fund under consideration in Article Eight, in previous years, these funds would have been included in the general operating budget, along with funds associated with the sewer department operations. Therefore, when we get to Article Eleven this evening, the operating budget, you will note that the year-over-year total funding in that article is less than moved in the previous, in the operating budget in the previous year. However, because of its associated financial management benefits and the transparency that we can provide you and all the rate-paying customers, I look for your support and assistance through this new approach.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. I've been requested by one of our Town Meeting Members, Mr. Tartaglia, for some time to speak on Article Eight. He has told me that his comments will relate in part to Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten, which all involve the establishment of the so-called enterprise funds. Mr. Tartaglia? I want to remind you folks, though, that although I'm permitting some discussion and debate on all three articles, because they are somewhat related, we are required by our Town Bylaw to take each of these articles independently and to vote on them one at a time, so there will be an opportunity for additional questions and discussions on each of Articles Eight-- each of Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten as we get to each one.
Beautiful day today. I'm here this evening to urge you to defeat Article Eight, Nine, and Ten. I'm very, very concerned. They all relate to the stormwater enterprise. I'm looking, I'm sorry, is that better? I don't see any benefit to the taxpayers in this article. It adds a level of bureaucracy, and I believe it's an end run around the spirit of the Prop 2 and a half override rules. It takes tens of millions of tax dollars off the town budget and will allow the administration to spend the money without Town Meeting or voter approval. Essentially, it kills the spirit of the Prop 2 and a half process. So I have a few questions. Will your taxes still go up? The answer is yes. Will your fees go up? Absolutely. Will the stormwater save you dollars? No. Will stormwater decrease the employment? No, not the total employment. Will your total cost of water and sewers go up? The answer to that is yes, and you've got a new bureaucracy. Will the Town Meeting lose its authority over multi-million dollar overrides? Will citizens be subject to a complicated bureaucratic process? I don't know how many of you have looked at the, the forms you have to fill out if you have an appeal. I mean, it's awful, I mean, really bad. One of the things listed in the, on the second page of one of the forms says that in order to file an appeal, the fees for the consulting, anything engineering, anything that has to be done for the appeal, has to be provided by the person making the appeal in advance. Will the stormwater, will your total costs of water and sewer go up? Is more power, one thing that really bothers me is more power is given to unelected appointed officials who are not responsible in any way to Town Meeting nor the voters. Why then establish the enterprise fund? The main benefit is for more transparency and accountability. I've only been doing this 13 or 14 years, but I think the town has done a pretty good job every year. Your whole budget is up for, up for looking at. It does, one thing it does do, it yields more resources for the administration to spend without consulting taxpayers. I don't think we need any more budget transparency, I think we're doing quite well. Now, the Government Finance Officers' Association, they have these best practices. I, you know, I, it's another government, it's written by the people who want to implement more of these. I really think it's a way around the Prop 2 and a half override. It's a regressive tax, and it's, and it's based on those impermeable surfaces, which I find almost a joke. For example, I have a deck, a lot of people have decks, wooden decks, water runs through the deck, goes down on the ground, disappears into the ground. That's counted as an impermeable surface. There's much more, though. There's some people whose, whose land doesn't even slope towards the storm drains, it slopes down the backyard into a stream. They're still going to be subject to these regulations. Also, this fee, I call it a tax, it demands that the taxpayer pay a tax for a service which was previously paid for by real estate taxes. Give you a simple, a simple point here. Several years ago, the crossing guards were switched from the town to the school, and the town paid the school $25,000 to take them. When they were moved out from under the Police Department on the town and moved over to the school, they lost benefits. Thought that was very unfair. So what that left now is that there were position numbers that the town could use again for, for different positions, for hiring. So the town gains, the administration gained, gained some benefits while hurting the crossing Now, the talk, I've heard this several times at, at meetings, various meetings, that the voters have no appetite for overrides. We proved that in 2006, 2007, 2008. There's no appetite for it. So this Article Eight will be a way for the administration to force-feed us what we don't have an appetite for. Anyone running for elective or reelection would be defeated by an anti-override candidate, and the administration knows that. So what can we do? Well, defeat this article. If we reduce our budget for the town across the board by 1.3%, that would give you the $1.8 million that, that we need to make this work. 1.3%. Now, I've worked for really big companies and really small companies. 1.3% is a piece of cake to cut. And when I had, you know, people worked for me in several departments, if my managers couldn't cut 1.3% out of their budgets, they would not have the budget anymore. It's as simple as that. You just get it done. I don't think we have to do any of this. A second one is to use returns, AK, a turnback, that's money appropriated to a department, and then turned back because it had, didn't need to be used. Well, you can forget about having turnback. In fact, there was $2 million a year for the last three years turned back to the town because the departments were more efficient and they were able to save that kind of money. So that's $2 million right there. Under this Article Eight, that turnback would no longer be, no longer be turned back. Part of the legisla, part of the article, if you read the whole thing, is that that can be retained by the enterprise. So now there's no reason why someone would try to be more efficient, because, you know, it'd be like any other state agency that, you know, spend all their money before the end of the year, or else, you know, actually, there's no penalty then, they can just keep the money. You can use free cash, we have millions of dollars of that from time to time, or you could do it the proper way and present to the voters, Town Meeting and the voters, a Prop 2 and a half override. That's the way we're used to doing this. That's a nine-minute, so I want to wrap up before the 10-minute. So that's what I got here. I think this is a complete waste of our energy, our time, and our tax money. I think you're going to see these, I think you're going to see the, those budgets, any, anytime they need more money in an enterprise, they're just going to have a vote by the appointed officials, and you won't have a second to think about it, it'll just be done. So I thank you very much for your attention, and let's hope that the good weather continues tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tartaglia. Are there any further questions or comments regarding Article Eight? Mr. Mizikar?
Just a couple of points of clarification that I may sort out some facts. The Town Meeting will have appropriation authority over the enterprise funds each year, just like this evening, you're being requested to appropriate funds that are raised through the water rates, and Town Meeting will retain its authority at the levels as presented on page 29 in your book this evening, at the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and, and 9 levels of the budget, just like current operations for Water Department. But it really is about separating these proprietary funds or business-like funds from the rest of the general fund that's used, or where we use taxation. And retained earnings is a term that is similar to the term free cash that's used by the Department of Revenue, but it's retained in and of its, in and of the utility itself. So as I mentioned in my opening comments, you'll remember that if we have excess water rates that come in over what we had budgeted, those funds currently flow into free cash, and then Town Meeting has been diligent in previous years to take those funds out of free cash and put them into the Water System Improvement Account. This will just occur in future years if this were to be adopted by function of the financial rules that we have to follow through the acceptance of this particular section of state statute, and it really secures it there and keeps it off the table for uses outside of the water system and any other enterprise that services are funded through this mechanism by.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article Eight unanimously.
Further questions or comments regarding Article Eight?
Bill Ghulie from Precinct Eight. I have two questions, or a question and a concern. The first is a question, what would be the relationship between the Personnel Board and the people who work in the enterprise?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
So the non-union employees would fall under their purview as they currently do, and the union employees would fall under the provisions of the collective bargaining agreements as they currently do, so no change?
The second issue is water rates, which have been a point of heated contention over the years here. Would this body, Town Meeting, retain any authority over setting water rates, or at least challenging and changing them if there were significant opposition?
Mr. Mizikar?
So Town Meeting does not currently set water rates, it's set by the Water Commissioners, Board of Selectmen function is that, and no change would be made to that?
Thank you.
Further questions or comments relating to Article Eight?
John Lukach, Precinct Two. I don't have a problem with this enterprise article, per se, but I question some of the numbers. Down in the, part of the, starting down, about two-thirds of the way down the page, it says, "With an enterprise fund, all costs of service, delivery, direct, indirect, and capital costs are identified." Okay. And then down at the end, the last sentence says, "Capital improvements for this department are proposed through Article 15 of this warrant." Okay. What I think is missing, unless, unless it's included under indirect costs, are things like future pension, the liability for future pension and retiree health costs. Are those numbers in here? Because if you're, if it's in other expenses, that's an awfully low number, and so I would think that if you're going to have an enterprise capturing all costs, it should capture those future costs as well.
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you for the question. They are not included in Article Eight, they are included in Article 11 as they're budgeted in their respective departments, so they are in that indirect cost category that you referenced. You will notice on page 32 in your book, we are transferring $1,615,932. Those are the indirect costs of the water enterprise, which include specific items that you had mentioned.
Follow-up?
Go ahead, Mr. Lukach.
Well, again, the article is saying that capital improvements are captured somewhere else, it's not saying that the pension and health, and retire, health benefits of retirees are captured somewhere else. And I would think if you're having an enterprise fund that's supposed to capture all the costs, with the, with the exception of capital improvements, which makes sense, then those costs should be included in Article Eight. Thank you.
Further, Mr. Mizikar, any response?
I mean, the standard for an indirect cost is it's budgeted in its home department where those costs are found. For instance, another example of, of indirect cost is the accounting services that are performed by the Town Accountant's Office in support of water operations, and those costs, whether it's the salaries of those employees or miscellaneous supplies and materials that the Accountant's Department incurs in supporting the water system, is budgeted within that department. That's why those revenues that are raised through the water rates are transferred through Article 11 to fund those particular aspects, and we're not asking the general tax levy to fund those.
Further questions or comments relating to Article Eight?
Lisa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. It's kind of in question to all the articles. My understanding is that there's a lot of state and federal laws and regulations regarding waters, drinking water, stormwater, water's very complicated. It's also likely that we're going to be having more regulations in the future as climate change, changes the water situation. So it's, it's to the town's advantage and to our advantage to have a system like this where we're able to, be able to move around the funding, to be able to meet the demands in the future? Am I correct in this?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
I would agree, yes.
Further questions or comments relating to Article Eight? If your hands in the air, please wave it around a little. Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Eight please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes. Article Nine, Mr. DePaulo?
I move the printed motion under Article Nine.
Second.
The printed motion under Article Nine has been moved and seconded, that the town accept the provisions of the aforementioned Chapter 44, Section 53 F and a half of the Mass. General Laws Establishing a Stormwater Services Enterprise Fund Effective Fiscal Year 2020, and that the town raise the sum of $1,205,078 from departmental receipts to wit stormwater receipts, and appropriate the same among the line items that are set forth in, on page 30. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article Nine.
And is there any discussion or explanation on Article Nine? Mr. Mizikar, Mr. DePaulo?
I mean, this is the, the enterprise fund for the stormwater utility, which is managed through the Board of Sewer Commissioners. This is a new utility that has been adopted and will come into effect on July 1st of 2019, and this sets up the funding mechanism and provides the budget for the first year of operations.
Questions or comments?
Marsha Pereira, Precinct Six. Why would you move this out of the Sewer Department, not leave it there? They use similar equipment, they're using the piping, they're digging up the ground with similar equipment. Why would this become something separate?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
So while we will still reap the benefits of having employees and contractors work under the umbrella of the Department of Public Works, we are charging a separate fee that was set by the Sewer Commissioners. So again, this is just the funding mechanism to make sure that every dollar that we raise for stormwater purposes stays with stormwater operations. operations and capital improvements. So, this is more about how we manage things financially and not how we operate on a day-to-day basis.
Further questions or comments relating to Article Nine? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass. Would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Nine please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes. Article Ten. Mr. DiPaolo?
May I move the printed motion under Article Ten?
Second.
The printed motion under Article Ten has been moved and seconded, that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and a Half, establishing a Cable Television Public Educational and Governmental Access Services Enterprise Fund, effective fiscal year 2020, and to raise the sum of $440,000 from departmental receipts from the CATV Enterprise and appropriate them according to the chart on page thirty-one, $440,000. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends Article Ten.
Any questions or comments relating to Article Ten? Mr. Mizikar?
Mr. Moderator, effective July first, 2019, all PEG access or local access cable-related funds must be managed by a city or town, according to the Department of Revenue, through either an enterprise fund, which we propose, or through a separate statutory accounting mechanism. It requires that all funds that are raised on your cable bill, there's a franchise fee that's funded through your cable bill, that those transfer from the cable provider to the town, and then out to the entity that actually runs the operations that SMC does. So, it's a little, I think, harder to understand since Selco is an entity of the town. So, an example would be if it was in a different community, we had a cable franchise agreement with a third-party entity. That third-party entity would enter into a franchise agreement with the Board of Selectmen. There'd be a franchise fee associated with that that would be raised, and those funds would be passed back to the town from the cable provider to operate our local public access channels. So, I think Selco, again, makes it a little harder to understand, but that's the same relationship contractually that we're obligated to adhere to, even though Selco is an entity of the town. So, this is, again, setting up the financial mechanism where we'll show that cable franchise fee that's collected by Selco will pass back to the town, and then out to a new entity, SMC, to operate our public access services.
Questions or comments with respect to Article Ten? Mr. Lukach.
John Lukach, Precinct Two. Is this funding amount of $440,000, is that equal to or greater than, or how does it compare to the last budget that the media, media services that the, that, you know, that was for this?
Understood.
What's the difference in the funding, this $440,000 versus what's been funded in the past? And a follow-up to?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
So, I would have to rely upon Mr. Hale for the details, but I will tell you that effective January first, that, you know, there's a new aspect of our cable license agreement where Selco employees no longer will provide the public access services. So, up until that point, until we get an agreement finalized with a third-party nonprofit entity, that third-party nonprofit entity will pick up those services. So, this is not only a new requirement of the general laws, but a new aspect of our franchise agreement. But Mr. Hale would be the best person to answer the cost of those services in the past.
Mr. Hale, Selco General Manager, Michael Hale.
In the previous calendar year, because we're in a calendar year as opposed to a fiscal year, the dollar amount was approximately $469,000 as opposed to the $440,000. And it's directly attributed to language in the franchise agreement that is reviewed every ten years between the Selco Commission and the Board of Selectmen, and it pegs the dollar amount to 4.25% of video revenue.
Follow-up, Mr. Lukach.
Well, first of all, could he say what that, whatever he just said? Whatever that means, you know, what's that, what is that? And then I had to still have a follow-up.
Selco takes in money for people who subscribe to cable television. 4.25% of that revenue is paid as a fee to public access to provide their programming.
Okay, my follow-up is, based on what you're saying, and based on the fact that I've heard you say in, on TV shows and meetings that cable revenue is declining, that also will mean that the support to the, to the local cable stations, Shrewsbury Media Connection, will also decline in the future. Is that correct?
That possibility exists throughout the country, not unique to Shrewsbury.
Right. I understand that. I'm just wondering, you know, how we're going to be able to maintain three local stations when you're already going to be seeing a decline, and you're going to be seeing more of a decline in future years. Thank you.
I think the new entity will be undertaking some private fundraising to offset any lost revenue. That's the plan.
Are there any further questions or comments with respect to Article Ten? Mrs. Swydan.
Carol Swydan, Precinct Six. I'm not clear on, how does this affect the electric part of Selco? Is that going to be an enterprise fund eventually, or is they're going to both be handled separately?
Response, Mr. Hale?
We are only talking about public access for this article, not the electric department, nor the Selco cable operations that provides internet, phone, and video products. Those are governed under a separate statute in Massachusetts, Chapter One Sixty-four, that outlines the budget and how that works.
Further questions or comments relating to Article Ten? Okay, I don't see any hands, so there being no further questions or comments. And this motion requiring a majority vote to pass. Would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Ten please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes. Article Eleven. Actually, let me make a few remarks, if I can, explanatory remarks, before I ask for a motion. Let me review our traditional method of dealing with this very long and somewhat complicated article. We will review and discuss this article two pages at a time after the motion has been made and seconded, beginning with pages thirty-two and thirty-three, discussing each department and line item individually, with any amendments to those line items to be proposed and discussed and voted on as we go through them. After reviewing the debt service information on pages forty-four and forty-five, we will move to the School Department Budget, which will be the subject of a separate presentation by members of the School Committee and Superintendent Joseph Sawyer. Following the school budget discussion, we'll move to the Operating Support Budget and the grand total of the town budget on page fifty. And at that time, we'll go back to page thirty-two, and with the assistance of Town Accountant Mary Thompson, who will provide the total of all the individual appropriations, as and if they are amended, we will arrive at the final grand total of the budget. This number, the grand total, will be, will be either restated, or if there are no amendments, if there are amendments, it will be inserted in the printed motion on page thirty-two, and the formal motion will then be restated by Mr. DiPaolo at that time for any further discussion, and then a vote. Is there a motion under Article Eleven?
Can I move the printed motion under Article Eleven?
Second.
Okay, so the printed motion has been made and seconded, that the town raise the sum, sorry, that the town raise the sum of $120 million, $120,394,398 in the manner, from the sources described on page thirty-two of your booklet, and that they be expended according to the departmental budgets and line items contained in the following pages, between pages thirty-three and approximately forty-six plus the school budget. Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee will hold its recommendation until all the entire budget is discussed and a final number is reached.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments generally regarding the budget process before we move to the page-by-page, essentially, review of the budget, department by department? Okay, let's begin on pages thirty-two and thirty-three. As I stated a few minutes ago, page thirty-two contains the overall figure for, budget figure for fiscal 2020. That begins on July first of this year, by the way, and describes the three, six different sources for those funds to be received, and then the appropriations to be made according to the individual department's budgets, which begin on page thirty-three. Are there any questions or comments with respect to either page thirty-two or the departmental, the first three departmental budgets on page thirty-three, Personnel Board, Selectmen, and Town Manager? Yes, ma'am. Is that Mrs. Dupree? Can't see you too well, Krista.
Krista Dupree, Precinct One. I have two questions. One is under the Personnel Board, and one is under Town Manager. I'm looking under Contractual Services. It's just about doubled under Personnel Board, and also under Contractual Services. It's another, these $6,000. Curious why that increased.
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
That particular line item within the Personnel Board budget is detailed out for professional services as it relates to any employee, employee improvement programs, classes, trainings, et cetera, whether those be provided onsite for municipal employees or through, with the approval of the Personnel Board for any off-site training. So, that's a commitment to additional continuing education for town employees.
Any further questions relating to the first three departmental budgets on page thirty-three? Mr. Sheikh.
Rashid Sheikh, Precinct Ten. Just wanted to understand, I think the biggest change here I see is under the Town Manager's salaries. It's from, you know, 2017, $150,000, to 2018, $205,000, and then it's appropriated for 2019, $180,000, whereas the recommended for 2020 is $300,869. Just wanted to understand what's going on, which, you know, which is causing such a big change.
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
Stock options? No. Across the board, we've tried to clean up our salaries, one, two, and three. So, salaries represent any department head-level positions within that aspect of the current classification scale. So, the change specifically in the Town Manager's aspect is the movement of the Assistant Town Manager's salary into the salaries, one aspect of the budget, since that position is within the department head's pay scale, within our compensation system. And then salaries, two, is administrative support in each department, and salaries, three, are professional and technical positions. So, we tried to be very clear and consistent. So, throughout different aspects of the budget, you will see there's, you know, some anomalies year over year. We're only increasing total FTEs in this budget by just over two. So, I just want to point that out, and so thank you for the question this early in the budget.
Any further questions or comments on pages thirty-two or thirty-three of the budget? Okay, let's move on to pages thirty-four and thirty-five, and the departmental budgets for Finance Committee, Accountant, Assessors, Treasurer Collector, Town Council, and Town Clerk. Questions or comments? Okay, there being none. Let's move forward. Pages thirty-six and thirty-seven. The budgets for the following departments, Election and Registration, Conservation Commission, Planning and Economic Development, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, and Public Buildings. Questions or comments? Yes, sir.
James Tate, Precinct Two. Can we just go back one second to the Town Manager portion? With the jump of about $100,000 over that, was the position added to the department?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
Yes, in fiscal year 2019, the current year, one additional full-time employee was added in. I think the year-over-year was about an employee and a half. One position was partially funded in prior years. Now, the Town Manager's office consists of the manager, the Assistant Town Manager, two assistants to the Town Manager, and two administrative assistants, one that serves the Board of Selectmen, and one that serves the Town Manager.
Any further questions or comments? We were, we were back on the Town Managers Department page on page thirty-three, back to pages thirty-four and thirty-five. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Hollenbach.
Lisa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. I just wanted to stretch. I don't really have a question. No, actually, the question I have is the Personnel portion. We had mentioned that we were having a difficult time getting people within the Treasury Department. Does this reflect, or any of the other budget categories and departments that we have, does this reflect the current needs that we're having, and potentially the personnel changes that we might need to have?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
Within the Personnel Board budget, there is flexibility within the new salary schedules to implement some incremental changes based on the classification and compensation study that's underway, being managed through the Personnel Board.
Further questions or comments on pages thirty-four, thirty-five of the book? Okay, let's flip the page. Pages thirty-six and thirty-seven. We're looking at the departmental budgets for election, sorry.
One more.
Do we have these already?
Yep.
Yep. Election and Registration, Conservation Commission, Planning and Economic Development, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, Public Buildings. Questions or comments? Yep. Ms. Sokolowski.
Gail Sokolowski, Precinct Six. Under Public Buildings, the, under separately identified items, can somebody enumerate what the $285,000, under separately identified appropriation, what those projects are? I think they used to appear as a footnote.
Response, Mr. Mizikar, or one of your department aides?
I have Mr. Bodinger, Public Buildings Division Manager.
Mr. Bodinger, Public Buildings Division Manager.
That line item is major building repairs. This year, we have multiple HVAC upgrades. It also includes, lost my train of thought, sorry. We have some front doors to do at Quidd School. We have some asbestos tile removal at Spring Street School. And then we always have some money for, you know, things that may happen that, in buildings that need to be replaced.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Ms. Hollenbach?
Lisa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. In regard to the election In regard to the Election and Registration, with the federal national election coming up in 2020, and the fact that we have extended voting and all that fun stuff, I remember in the past that there was quite a, a large expense for that. Is that reflected into 2020, or is that, am I missing out my years?
Response, Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, so that will occur in the next fiscal year budget.
Mr. Lukach.
John Lukach, Precinct Two. Under Public Buildings, sex salaries oh-three, fairly large increase of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or about, what, twenty-five percent, almost? How many, is that, is that a move of employees? Are those new employees? What's the, what's the reason for that big increase?
Mr. Mizikar, response?
So, it's a little bit of both. We are moving, funding out of the Contractual Services line item to hire, hopefully hire internally an HVAC technician position, and we had the reorganization related to the Department of Public Works, and the Division Manager's salary occurs within the salaries three line item, so that's a change. And, so it's a, a little bit of a combination of both. Only one additional new position.
Further questions or comments with respect to pages thirty-six or thirty-seven? Mr. Sheikh.
Rashid Sheikh, Precinct Ten. So I think what I heard Town Manager saying is that basically we are moving, if I heard it correctly, moving out of the Contractual Services and hiring an employee, and so the salaries are, and some other, you know, thing, so it's about two hundred thousand dollar difference in salaries are increased. But then I also see, if I'm reading it right, Contractual Services are also increasing from two-point-one million to two-point-two million, two-three, so that's another over a hundred thousand dollar increase. So, I'm, I'm a little confused. Are we moving out of the Contractual Services, increase employees, or are we really adding both?
Response, Mr. Mizikar.
We're not moving all Contractual Services. We're moving one employee position. I can give you the exact number. It's within the professional and technical scale for an HVAC technician level position. But other expenses in Contractual Service areas are increasing as well. So unfortunately, we, well, we do anticipate saving money by bringing the HVAC technician position back in-house, rather than having to rely upon a number of different service individuals, even if we use the same company. We have someone different showing up from different HVAC, from the different HVAC tech companies that we use for our various buildings. It takes them a while to acclimate themselves to the, to the system and diagnose the problem that we're having. Having someone that's close to our buildings and systems makes them more familiar with it, makes our diagnosis much more easier, and we're not spending on a time and material basis for those individuals coming up to speed. But again, you know, the various different Contractual Services, mainly cleaning services and things like that, we are seeing the market, even though we're competitively bidding them, continuing to move upwards over time.
Further questions or comments with respect to the departments described in pages thirty-six and thirty-seven? Okay, let's move to pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine, beginning with Police Department, Fire Department, Building Inspector, Waits and Measures, Emergency Management, and Forestry. Questions or comments with respect to any of these departmental budgets? Yes, sir.
Jason Molina, Precinct One. I have a question related to the Fire Department. I see that you pretty much level, practically level funding for eighteen to nineteen to twenty. Is there any plans to increase funding in out-years? And is any opportunity to increase funding for this fiscal year? Given that there is perhaps inadequate funding for the staff of the Fire Department? I'm sure we want our fire safety utmost and responsive. And to that matter, before I turn it over back to you, I have a question if perhaps the, if there is a opportunity, I see on the Finance Committee there is a reserve fund of two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Don't know what that is about. Give me some clarification if that is any opportunity to move towards the Fire Department. Thank you.
Response, Mr. Mizikar or Chief Vona?
So the Fire Department is funding at the same staffing levels as it currently is. I'm sure everyone's aware, there's been ongoing conversations throughout the spring regarding fire staffing levels, between the Fire Department, myself, the Board of Selectmen, the Fire Chief, and the Fire Union. Again, the budget is funded as it is, with the same staffing levels year-over-year from fiscal year nineteen. There is a commitment in, in two ways. As similar in past years, the Fire Department has written a SAFER grant application, which seeks funding for four additional firefighters. That grant award would give us a, a great opportunity to bring four additional firefighters on, which is a commitment and a request by the Fire Department to get us headed in the right direction, and a commitment by the Board of Selectmen to move in that direction. Board of Selectmen authorized that grant, and we know we need to move, you know, upwards in our staffing to be able to meet adequate shift levels and firefighter levels when we respond to emergent situations. If that SAFER grant does not come to fruition, there'll be additional conversations this fall where we'll look to put local resources in place outside of the grant application in order to move in the direction. It is a challenge within the fire services, in order to get, you know, one additional person per truck, per station, we have to hire in increments of four. We have some other opportunities where we can look at other aspects of our operations to, you know, speed up that process in the future. I've been encouraged by the dialogue of, of all parties to the state, and I think we're headed in the right direction, but certainly wouldn't allow others to comment through the moderator.
Further questions or comments with respect to pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine of the book? Okay, let's flip the page. Pages forty and forty-one, departments covered are Other Post-Employee Benefits, Pensions, Public Works, Town Engineer, Highway Department, and Street Lighting. Questions or comments? Okay, let's keep moving. Pages forty-two and forty-three. The departments covered on these two pages are Cemeteries, Health, Council on Aging, Veteran Services, Commission on Disabilities, and Library. Questions or comments regarding any of these departmental budgets?
Lisa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. Is the Contractual Services for the Health Department, is that the fee that we pay to belong to the collaborative? And do we see this as being a productive financially and as far as service level continuing in the future?
Response, Mr. Mizikar.
Yes, that is the line item that we do fund that contractual relationship in our municipal agreement with the City of Worcester. We find tremendous value through that relationship with our partners in the region, which is spearheaded by Karen Clark at the City of Worcester. They provide services above and beyond. I think the sum of each and, every individual town, you know, adds up, you know, to a greater value if we undertake on these services alone. And I'm fortunate, fortunate to be part of a statewide commission, along with Representative Kane, who were recommending additional communities considered models such like this for provision of public health services across the Commonwealth.
Further questions or comments on pages forty-two or forty-three?
Hi, I'm Michelle Conlon, Precinct Ten. I have a question for the Cemeteries. Since we have acquired the Glavine Center property, is the town also assuming responsibility for the Hillside Cemeteries that are on both east and west side of Lake Street, as, that are, were previously part of the Glavine's property?
Response, Mr. Mizikar.
Those, those aspects of the parcels remain in the ownership of the Commonwealth.
Further questions or comments relating to pages forty-two and forty-three? Okay, let's move forward to pages forty-four and forty-five. Parks and Recreation, Debt and Interest. Questions or comments? See, Kevin, I told you we'd be getting to the sexy stuff eventually.
Bernie Forletta, Precinct One. I just have a comment concerning the layout of the report. I notice that sometimes there's a huge variation in year-over, year-over-year comparisons in dollar amounts, and typically that raises a number of questions, is what is accounting for that variation? Would it not make sense to, you're, footnote it, asterisk it, and give an explanatory note as a footnote as to what's causing that variation? In that way, we might be able to eliminate a number of the questions that come up asking what's the cause of the variation?
Response, Mr. Mizikar.
It certainly noted that we would be able to do that. I'm speaking for myself, I know we spend a lot of time vetting this entire report out on a line-by-line, dollar-for-dollar basis with the Finance Committee, and this report is the culmination of that. The details can always be found online, starting in February, that look more like this. So we try to provide concise information to town meeting, but we will consider the comment.
Well, the, the reason I'm asking that is that I am a footnote reader, and, and, and I do like to see the explanations. Thank you.
I think there's a twelve-step program for footnote readers, Bernie. Step one is admitting that you're a footnote reader. Any other questions relating to Parks and Recreation, Debt, Long-Term Debt, and by the way, Short-Term Debt is one line on page forty-six. I should have included that. Any questions remaining on those budget items? Okay, we're going to move now to the School Department budget for fiscal 2020, and ask School Department, School Committee Chair Sandra Fritz to come up and, along with, is it anyone else, Sandy, Dr. Sawyer, or Mr. Collins? Okay, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening again. My name is Sandra Fritz, and I am the Chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Before I discuss our budget this year, I'd like to acknowledge and thank our former school committee member, Erin Canzano. She recently stepped down after twelve years of service to the students in the community of our town, so I want to give Erin a round of applause. And I can't see her in my glasses. On behalf of my colleagues, John Wensky, Dr. Dale McGee, Jason Palace, and new member Lindsay Heffernan, I am pleased to be here tonight to present and discuss with you the School Department budget for fiscal year 2020. For the FY20 budget process, we tried to shift the dynamic and the method you have seen with past budgets, that typically began with a large gap of, or deficit between the Superintendent and Town Manager's initial budget recommendations. The School Department's FY20 budget process has two components. The first is a proposed status quo budget recommendation that illustrates the financial resources necessary to bring the existing educational program and staff forward. FY20 budget drivers include existing labor costs and non-union staff compensation, increased transportation costs, special education tuition rate increases per state regulatory authority, as well as supplies. However, the status quo budget is not sufficient to meet the expectations the community has for our schools. After receiving significant input from stakeholders, including parents, students, staff, and community members, the district developed the Portrait of a Shrewsbury Graduate, which defines the skills, knowledge, and dispositions Shrewsbury students should attain and develop during their time in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Next, four strategic priorities with specific goals and action items were developed to provide a path for student success. The four strategic priorities are: space and resources to support effective learning, learning environments where everyone's success matters, enhanced well-being of all, and connected learning for a complex world. The second component of the budget process represents recommendations for targeted investments directly aligned with and vital to achieving the district's five-year priorities, goals, and these were adopted in December of 2017. The five-year plan creates a roadmap for the district to follow in order to achieve our educational vision and priorities in a manner that best supports our students, meets community expectations for excellent public education, and the high level of student success. The School Committee recognizes that funding is not available in the FY20 budget to meet all of the identified investment needs. However, some level of funding would be needed to advance the district's important educational priorities and goals. It was clear during the budget process that the School Department would need to look beyond the operating budget and seek other sources of funding. Another important piece of the School Department's FY20 budget process included engaging the Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston to do an organizational study of the district's central office positions and functions. Members of the Collins Center project team interviewed the district administrators, support staff, principals, and school committee members. They also gathered information regarding comparable school districts, central office, personnel, and functions. The UMass Collins Center report provides the School Department with an independent assessment of recommendations for an enhanced central office organizational structure that will properly support the district's mission. The Shrewsbury Central Office Organizational Study Report is available on the School Department's website. The gap between the Superintendent and Town Manager's FY20 final budget recommendation is seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Several gap-closing measures were utilized by the School Department in order to acquire additional funding for the FY20 budget. The School Committee recognizes the burden fees and tuition costs placed on families. However, fees and tuition are a critical funding source for our school district. The School Committee reviewed current school fees and tuitions and voted to make incremental increases to transportation and athletic fees, as well as preschool tuition, in order to account for inflationary costs. These changes are expected to generate an estimated increase of forty-six thousand in revenue from those resources. There is one area where the School Department is working to eliminate over time a significant tuition burden on families that is far out of step with the times. As discussed at multiple school committee meetings, public hearings, and at last year's town meeting, the School Committee has established a goal of providing universal access to full-day tuition-free kindergarten when space becomes available due to the New Bale School project. The Committee strongly supports this goal and is taking the approach of stepping down the tuition rate over time, which the Committee believes represents a fiscally prudent approach to reasonably weaning the district from the funding coming from the full-day tuition. This planned approach to be, to incrementally reduce this tuition avoids the need to shift to the appropriated budget at all at one time when the New Bale School opens in the year 2021. The tuition is being reduced by one-third next year, from thirty-six hundred to twenty-four hundred annually, and it will decrease estimated tuition revenue by approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand. and it will decrease estimated tuition revenue by approximately $225,000. School staff also actively sought private grants and sponsorships to supplement the school district's budget. Grants and sponsorships support the district and its educational vision in ways that would not be possible within the appropriated budget. This year, the district was fortunate to receive several competitive grants. A $50,000 grant through the Executive Office of Education, Mass. STEM Hub, and Project Lead the Way for startup costs for biomedical science class at Shrewsbury High School, as well as an additional $20,000 for computer science coursework. Two grants related to mental health that will address key strategic priorities in the coming years are: a $1 million grant, which will be paid at the rate of $100,000 per year over ten years through the Department of Public Health. These funds will be primarily focused on providing mental and behavioral health counseling at Sherwood Middle School. A $100,000 grant will be paid at the rate of $10,000 this year and $90,000 next year from the Mass. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which will be primarily focused on providing mental and behavioral health counseling at the elementary level. The district has also entered into a five-year partnership with the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union to sponsor the Colonial Connections Program that will align with the district's strategic priority and goals around connected learning for a complex world. This sponsorship includes $400,000 of funding that will support the purchase of a van to provide transportation for students to access learning outside of the school, funds for various activities, speakers, and/or materials that support career awareness and real-world learning, and the initial funding for an Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being. The manner and complexity of providing educational services to meeting the varying needs of today's students means that our school district must periodically assess its educational practices and organizational structure. The new Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being position was identified as a needed additional leadership role at the district level in order to assist with oversight of important district strategic goals with a focus on community partnerships, social-emotional learning, resource development, and the general well-being of student and staff. This position will also assume some of the current direct reports of the superintendent, which was one of the key recommendations in the Collins Center organizational study report. Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union funding will allow the district to fully fund the new position in the first year of the partnership and subsidize the cost for it over the following four years, with the district assuming the cost over time. The investment in district-level administration leadership was fully vetted by the School Committee during the budget process, including consideration of the need for the position, affordability, and sustainability. At the School Committee's meeting on May 15th, on a recommendation by Dr. Sawyer, the Committee voted unanimously to appoint Dr. Jane Lazzott, the district's longest-serving principal, to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being. The School Committee would like to thank Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union for its generosity and investment in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. The FY20 school budget recommendation is for $66,302,41. This is a $2,164,434, or 3.39 increase over FY19. While this level of town appropriated funds would not have been sufficient to fund even the status quo School Department budget, the FY20 budget process leveraged a projected positive budget variance for the current fiscal year, which exists due to lower-than-projected costs in categories such as special education tuition and vocational technical school tuition. It also benefits from lower projections in these categories in FY20 compared to the initial estimates made at the start of the budget process. These developments, in combination with increased fee levels and funds from new grants and sponsorships, allows the school district to, one, fund our status quo budget that allows the district to move its existing program and staff with no reductions in programming or staff; and, two, fund new resources beyond the status quo budget to advance the district's strategic priorities and goals, including the addition of 14.3 new full-time equivalent positions to address the important needs related to strategic priorities and mandated services. Of the new positions, nearly half will have direct impact on addressing student's social, emotional, mental, and behavioral health across the elementary, middle, and high school levels. The remaining positions being added are mainly due to enrollment primarily at the high school. Funding for other strategic investments will be made in software to track at-risk, high-need student progress and additional science materials to address changes in the science curriculum. There is no question that the students in Shrewsbury Public Schools receive an excellent education. Students continue to excel in the classroom, on the field, and stage. The direct results are determined by student achievement, which is supported by state, regional, and national recognition for academic strength. Strong public schools aid value to communities and taxpayers. This year's school budget process reflects a thoughtful approach for funding our schools in an efficient and cost-effective manner. The School Committee believes our new budget approach, combined with Mr. Mizikar's budget methodology, resulted in a smaller initial budget gap and a more realistic reflection of the budget endpoint. However, the budget process continues to remain difficult. For the period of FY14 through projected FY20, Chapter Seventy State Aid has increased 6.2 percent. During the same period, the local contribution required to provide education funding has increased 39.5 percent. There is significant pressure on the town's operating budget when state aid is relatively flat. Despite this, the FY20 school budget is good news, and the targeted investment in key district priorities will have a positive impact on staff and students. On behalf of the School Committee and the Central Office Team, I would like to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to the Board of Sloughman, the Finance Committee, Town Manager, and Town Meeting members, and the Shrewsbury community for your continued investment and commitment to public education. Thank you for your time and attention, and I respectfully request your support of our FY20 budget request. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins could join me at the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Please remember, folks, the materials, the information for the school budget is contained on pages forty-seven and, I'm sorry, forty-seven through fifty, but then in more detail in the separate booklet that was mailed to you with your other town meeting materials. Questions or comments relating to the School Department budget for fiscal 2020? Mrs. Nichols?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I thought it was really, really well-done and really, really informative. And what really struck me was the, I don't know how new it is, but the dependence on grant funding, private partnerships, now having a senior administrator that's going to be responsible for, you know, reaching into the community to get that added financial support. And I, what I was wondering, given that education is not my area of profession, is this a common trend amongst school systems in the state right now? Are they reaching outside? Because at first blush, it would be a little bit concerning, I would think, for yourselves to be dependent on somewhat tentative, you know, tentative funding sources to continue to operate the school budget. And so I'm just curious to see if this is something that's happening throughout the Commonwealth, or...
I can't speak as...
Response, Mrs. Fritz?
I probably can't speak as well as Dr. Sawyer, but I think when we look at our community and looking at the turf field and the amount of money that was raised privately to fund a public field and looking at the amount of sponsorship and grants that we're getting, thank goodness that we're getting them, because it's adding to the budget things that we need to do that we would not be able to do in the appropriated budget. Is it concerning? I think to me, I'm looking at it as more of a trend, as in public education, you know, we're looking at going out and getting sponsorships from businesses. I wouldn't want to see it continue forever, but I personally, I think it's something that we're leaning more to in order to get all those things that we need done in the budget. And Dr. Sawyer may have more.
Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the question, Ms. Nichols. I think it's a trend. I think we're probably on the leading edge of that curve in terms of the extent to which we've been doing this over the past couple of years. Certainly, all of us can look back to our entire careers, even when we were students in schools. I think when I was a kid, I remember there was a popular bumper sticker that talked about something on the lines of, you know, someday the Pentagon will have to have a bake sale in schools, we'll get all the funding they need from the government. I mean, fundraising has always been a major problem, issue, but tend to be more localized and done through parent support groups such as PTOs and booster clubs. I would say over the past, maybe going back about two decades, the trend around major sponsorships, I think, was more typically in the Midwest and the South, where school districts tended to be much larger countywide, significantly larger than what you tend to find in Massachusetts. But we are tending to see more, especially for things like we did with the stadium, athletic facilities, naming rights, in terms of reaching out and specifically getting a, building a partnership through a local business to actually start to multiply the kind of partnerships we can build, I think is something that's fairly unique. And we're excited to embark upon that, and we think the outcome will be very good for our students and for our staff and for the community. But certainly, I also share the concern that if we become overly reliant on outside sources of funding, we may have to make difficult decisions about what we do and what we can innovate with. But in terms of some of the other grants, and I do want to commend Meg Belcito, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. She and her Assistant Director, Meg Bartlett, wrote one of the mental health grants we'll benefit from, along with Noel Freeman, our Director of Nursing. She wrote the very substantial grant from the Department of Public Health. That'll be a million dollars over ten years. That's a very sustainable grant, that's atypical. But oftentimes, these bring in resources that, over time, the district will be able to benefit from and hopefully subsume through normal operations, or, in many cases, head off other costs. Our hope, certainly, by addressing the mental and emotional and behavioral health needs of students, the more proactive we can be about that, the less likely we'll have much more expensive types of approaches to triage that work, especially very expensive out-of-district placements that can result if we can't meet a student's needs within the district. So I think we are being innovative, but certainly, we have to continue to look very carefully and thoughtfully at how we're doing this year over year and as we look into the future.
Further questions or comments regarding the School Department budget? Ms. Iacardi?
Can you hear me? Mary Iacardi, Precinct Five. Thank you so much. The budget looks great. I know personally, the Collins Center is fabulous. I work with them, but not on this project, so. I really like the budget. I have one question, though. Last year, we got a really handy sheet, and it was a printout of the number of staff at which salary. So if I'm reading this right, the pay scale in here is the teachers' and the professionals' pay scale for the SEA?
Yes.
Okay? And, but not the paras or anything like that? The paraprofessionals?
The full budget information is on the website.
Right, right, okay.
You may...
Thank you. All right, so my question is, is the sheet, and I didn't look, so shame on me, is the sheet that tells us how many are at which grade and step on the webpage? We got that printout last year of how many teachers were at max and that sort of thing, because it's a little deceiving to look at the pay scale. Certainly, more are at the higher end, not the lower end, and maybe you could just give us a sense of where people are on the pay scale. And a second question, and then I'll sit down, I promise. You've put in 2%, but that's not settled yet, correct?
Correct. We are in the middle, we are in...
You're in the middle of bargaining. So if it is more than 2%, if it's much more than that, you'd come back to town meeting? Or you'd, it would depend on how much more it is? Okay.
Response, Mr. Collins?
Sure. I guess I would just, first, the teacher salaries, the salary grid for the current fiscal year, which this is the last year of a three-year contract, and that does call for, in the current year, fiscal 19, a 2% salary increase. So you can see that the actual scale there. And you're right, we did take this booklet, in fact, and in the interest of being more succinct, as was referenced earlier, this is about 25 pages fewer than it was last year, based upon feedback from various groups. So we did not include the distribution of who's on what step in this particular booklet. I can tell you that with respect to the teachers, that it's about 55, 56% of the teaching staff are on the top step or step 13 of that particular salary schedule. And then with respect to the paraprofessional scale, that's not in the booklet. There's a greater number, I'd say it's closer to 60 or 65% of paraprofessionals are on their top step.
Further questions or comments relating to the School Department budget? Mrs. Goldman?
Roberta Goldman, Precinct Eight. This, I may not have anything new to add to the budget part, but on your section of strategic priorities on page seventeen, space and resources to support effective learning, you've got a five-year strategic goal, plan, or goal. And it says, "Assess preschool through grade 12 facility needs, including et cetera, et cetera." I was wondering, my interest, of course, is to teach the whole child, starting from early childhood, which I've kind of talked about throughout the years, but when you assess the preschool through grade 12, is the preschool just special ed or children who have disabilities? Or is it for all children in preschool age? When you're thinking about it?
Again, my understanding, Dr. Sawyer can correct me if I'm wrong, this assessment is, it's part of the funding that with the Bale School Project, we'll be doing that full assessment of all grades, and it would include all learners, all grades.
Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. And Ms. Goldman, your question about the composition of the student population of the preschool, we are required by law to educate students who, starting at the age of three, who have demonstrated special learning needs. They must be educated in an environment that has a ratio of typically developing peers. So we do have students that we're educating as a result of their special education learning plans, but we have roughly an equal ratio, sometimes more, of students who are typically developing. So it's really a mix. We do have a limited number of seats just because of space, and we have a lottery for those seats for students who wish to attend preschool. We've been able to meet most of the demand typically over the last several years. Of course, we have classrooms at Parker Road Preschool, the facility there, as well as space that we rent behind the post office on Maple Ave, on Wesleyan Terrace, where we have two additional preschool rooms there. And preschool, of course, has sessions, some morning sessions, some afternoon sessions. We do not currently have a full-day preschool option for mixed groups. We do have some students who remain for a full day for special therapies if they do require that for their special needs, but it is a mixed population of students.
Just one more question on the preschool idea. Are they in, is that population in this outside, finding funding from outside options or something? I read it somewhere that the options of the School Department is to, of course, to have private funding, yet there was other kinds of choice outside of that? Is that included in that for preschool?
Dr. Sawyer?
I think you might be referring to the fact that the families of typically developing students must pay tuition to access the preschool program. It is, we are not able, of course, by law, to charge tuition to students who require preschool services due to their special learning needs, but the students who are typically developing do pay tuition, and I think that's probably the reference you were looking at.
Further questions or comments regarding the School Department budget? Yes, ma'am. Next to Mrs. Vigent.
Melissa Pride Fos, Precinct Seven. I wanted to ask about the well-being strategic priority and whether our district will be growing to support youth mental health first training, first aid training for its teachers, like the growing surrounding districts.
Response, Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. And I know Ms. Pride Fos is involved with the Board of Shrewsbury and Family Services, which has a recent grant, as I understand it, around mental health first aid. We've provided some mental health first aid training already to a number of people in our district. About five or six years ago, we had a number of staff members trained as trainers. Actually, the entire leadership team at the time, including myself, participated in that training, a number of our paraprofessionals. We actually, I know that Ms. Belcito was actually in contact with a staff member at Shrewsbury and Family Services today. I know we have an administrative meeting on Thursday, where that's a topic of discussion. In terms of teacher training, I think that's something that we are, unfortunately, although as much time as we do try to spend on professional development days, the early release days that our families are certainly familiar with once a month during most of the year, we have a number of mandates in terms of training we have to provide to our teachers... we have a number of mandates in terms of training we have to provide to our teachers as a result of state mandates, as well as making choices around our own strategic plans. But in terms of providing some type of training, that is one that we're definitely considering very seriously. And one of the things we're trying to do, of course, is grow our partnerships with all the various groups in town and Shoes, Youth and Family Services included with that. So appreciate the question, and that's an ongoing discussion right now.
Thank you. Can I have a follow-up?
Sure, go ahead, Mrs. Pride Fos.
Are any of the full-time positions, particularly in the middle schools, surrounding guidance or counseling services, and the addition of those resources as needed?
Dr. Sawyer.
Sure, I can refer you to, in your packet, page three of the executive summary, which is a listing of the positions being added. And I would refer about maybe a third of the way down the page. There is a, well, actually, up higher, there's a couple of counseling positions being added at the high school. One is what would be more, what we would experience as a traditional guidance counselor, typically called a school counselor these days, who would typically work with students on their academic scheduling, college applications, as well as providing them with various kinds of support. But then also an adjustment counselor. And an adjustment counselor really works more with students who may be experiencing social and emotional difficulties in the school setting. So we're pleased to be able to add those two positions. If you move down a little further, you'll see that there are three, at the elementary level, adjustment counselors, clinical positions that we will add. Right now, we're planning to add them as three adjustment counselors. We have not previously had adjustment counselors at the elementary level. One thing that I heard, and our leadership team heard loud and clear over the course of this year, talking with parent groups, advisory groups, talking with our faculty and our paraprofessional advisory groups, and certainly, based on principals and assistant principals' observations, we have a very significant need relative to a small but growing percentage of students who are really experiencing a significant amount of emotional and social issues at school and behavioral issues. And so bringing those resources to bear is very important. At the middle school level, you'll see that there's 1.6 adjustment counselors slated to be added at Sherwood Middle School. One is a full-time position that will be through that Mass Department of Health grant. That would be modeled after a very successful program that originated in the Brookline Public Schools that we adopted at the high school. And this is a middle school version of that, that we think will be very successful, especially as kids transition from multiple elementary schools to a larger Sherwood Middle School. And then the .6 FTE is to make an existing .4 position of full times, that we would have three other full-time counselors. We actually added a .6 counselor at Oak Middle School this budget cycle, this current year, fiscal year. That was one of the adds we made a year ago. So that each of the middle schools will have three full-time adjustment counselors now, instead of two and a fraction. Plus this additional new adjustment counselor for this special program at Sherwood Middle School that we expect will be particularly supportive of students who are having issues with transitions to the middle school level. So we have a number of positions that we're adding as relative to social and emotional health, where counseling resources will be available.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments relating to the school department budget? Ms. Hollenbach.
I'm Lisa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. Transportation was a big, big increase. Do we anticipate that with Beal coming online, the new Beal coming online and redistricting, that potentially, we might be redistricting, saving money, working it out even, costing more? You see where I'm going?
Response, Mr. Collins.
Well, I think generally, when we open up the new Beal School, we're certainly going to have more students at the kindergarten level for transportation. And in terms of, you know, the number of buses will likely increase as a result of that, as will the number of people paying the bus fee. So really, you know, the impact on the budget is going to be strictly contingent upon the redistricting plan because the fee that's charged is for students that live under two miles from their school. So that redistricting project is going to be an important one for us to take on, probably as early as this fall, in terms of the planning process. But it's a little bit too early to be really specific about any additional equipment that might be needed.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. McManus.
Sandy McManus, Precinct Ten. I have a question that's printed in your school booklet on page 31, about the Shoesbury High School enrollment history. Are you concerned about the growth? It says there's a 61% increase, and the high school's only 17 years old. And it looks like the arrow is going this way. So is that a concern to you? Or, what is it called, the Massachusetts School Building Authority? Do they periodically come around and evaluate like they did years ago when we had to build a new high school? So, well, the growth...
Response, Mrs. Fritz.
Growth is definitely a concern, especially at the high school. We are at capacity. We are okay with our class sizes right now. But, you know, as we move and if more students move in, that could also be a concern going forward. But that is a school that is bursting at the seams with students, absolutely. And I cannot answer the second part of your question. Can Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Things are very tight at the high school, for sure. The number of students is well over its design capacity. Our projections are that that will be incrementally increased over the next few years. Pretty similar situation, so we don't expect any significant spikes in the near future. The facility study that was referenced earlier will be very important in terms of looking, taking a look at those projections and what's available to us in terms of space. One of the things, ways we're trying to address it, obviously, we're not adding physical space to the building, is to, you notice, there's two positions that are in the budget that will allow us to decouple the high school from the middle schools. We actually have a number of staff right now who have a shared schedule. They may teach their first period or two at the high school, then move to the middle school level and teach the rest of the day there. And that's been quite cost-effective for us over time. And, you know, we lose a little bit of efficiency with the travel time between the buildings, but it's worked for us. By adding some fractions of additional positions across foreign language and performing arts, which are typically where we have those shared staff, we'll be able to decouple those schedules, which will allow the high school to actually be more creative in how it uses its schedule and how it rotates it. Because right now, it's hamstrung to a large degree by making sure that those teachers are present when those classes are taught. And that may enable us to be, to do some things, even with lunches, how many lunches we can have, how those lunches are spaced out. So that's one way, without adding space, that we're going to try to address the issue. But of course, we're going to have to keep a very close eye on it. If you look at the cohorts of numbers of students, you know, our largest cohort of students right now, in terms of, has come through, is the current junior class. There'll be, estimated to be about 500 students next year, I believe. And we have about 500-plus, I think, in the current eighth-grade class. But of course, some of those students will go to St. John's and Asabette and other schools. So that'll probably be in the four, if you remember the numbers, about the 470 or so is projected, I think, for next year as freshmen. But we'll continue to look very closely at our projections each year and determine what mitigating actions we can take. But there's no question that it is significantly crowded compared to what the school was designed for. It's wonderful to live in a town where people want to come live here. We all understand reasons why. But of course, the pressure on enrollment and space, just as we have lots of pent-up demand for space, and we are really looking forward to adding the Beal School in a couple of years because we aren't able to house all the things we need to house in our elementary buildings the way they should be right now. And that will, that will free up a lot of space in each of the buildings when that happens. So it's something we're paying very close attention to.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Joan Goodchild, Precinct Eight. There's a significant amount of research that indicates that teenage students have better outcomes if they're able to start school later. And I note that that is one of the five-year strategic goals and one of the categories. So I wonder where the district stands in terms of its investigation of the feasibility of that and, you know, what the timeline looks like for deciding whether or not that's something we could undertake here in Shoesbury.
Mrs. Fritz.
You're referring to student stock times? We did have a stock time committee that worked for about a year, about two years ago. We do want to get back into that. That is one of the committees, subcommittees, that the school committee and Dr. Sawyer do want to start up again. Dr. Dale McGee is very interested in that particular question. And I know it's a very, a lot of districts across the state are looking at it or have already done some things with it. So it's definitely something we are going to be looking at this coming year.
Further questions or comments, Mrs. Dupree?
Krista Dupree, Precinct One. On page three, I just had a couple quick questions in the booklet. The software for data dashboard tracking, what type of students is that? Software for special ed, for higher-level learners?
Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. As you might imagine, there's a lot more use of data in a variety of ways in terms of some of the access we have now to different tools through various software. We're very fortunate to be a district where our students have good access to electronic devices that, in the right way, we believe enhances their learning. One of the things that we've been looking at, and based on recommendations coming from the state level and things that we're required to do under the new update of the federal law, which is now known as the Every Student Succeeds Act, it used to be called No Child Left Behind, we're responsible for monitoring students who may be struggling. And so part of the answer is it's monitoring all students. It's looking at data that's coming in, whether that's the once-a-year formalized data through a state test like MCAS. It could be attendance figures, it could be disciplinary events. Could also be local assessments, such as reading assessments that we do at the elementary level. And there are a number of products that are on the market now that help take a lot of those different data pieces and create essentially a dashboard so you can start to identify sooner students who might have different characteristics that are indicating they may be at risk of not doing as well as they should. Ms. Clouter and her team have been vetting some of those products. That's an estimate of what it would probably take to be instituting something in terms of making it work in conjunction with our Power School database for students and provide us with the kind of ongoing data so we can really monitor. It's the idea of trying not to let students look through the cracks or getting earlier signals that something might be amiss before we get into something that's a more significant situation.
Follow-up?
Go ahead, Mrs. Dupree.
Thank you. Same page as well. I was, could not, I apologize, I could not find a line item for athletics. Is athletics being fully supported by fees? Whether it's coaches', uniforms, et cetera? I know the field, the turf field obviously was not town money. And also, in regards to the great addition of the Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being, what the future planning is to keep that position in future years? And my last note is, this is the first time since I've moved here, almost 12 years ago, to hear really good news for the school budget. So, great job.
Dr. Sawyer, do you want to take those questions in order?
Sure, I'll try to do, if I miss one, just let me know which one I missed. I'll go and try to go in reverse order. Other than the year when the town supported the override and we added lots of positions, this is probably the best budget scenario since I've been superintendent, for sure, in the last decade. And we appreciate that very much. And I'm glad things, you know, broke our way in a variety of ways and some of these grants were available to us. It was a very major positive development. In terms of the athletic department, there is a proportion that's funded through the appropriated budget. I'll ask Mr. Collins to point out which larger category that's part of. But the salary of the athletic director and some funding for events and whatnot are in the budget. I don't have the exact ratio in my head, but certainly, a very significant proportion is funded through the athletic fees. Athletic fees typically pay for the stipends that are paid to coaches. We also have other revenue, of course, from gate receipts when we sell tickets to games. And sometimes, those will go to pay officials or things of that nature. But there certainly is support for the athletics budget. One real benefit and plus is that, you may recall, a year ago, we did add some middle school-level sports that we previously didn't have. And we've been very pleased that we added field hockey in the fall for Oak Middle School girls. We added spring formal track, went from an intramural to a full competition team for track and field against other middle schools. And also added the sports of baseball and softball. And so we actually have more opportunities this year for middle school interscholastic sports than we've had, as far, in my recollection, for sure, since I've been in the district. And some of that is through fees and some of that is through the appropriated budget. And as far as the new position, you know, next year, the impact is no dollars out of the appropriated budget. The following year, I believe it's in the memo that went to the school committee. But essentially, I believe it's funded about 50%, and then it steps down over a five-year period. The assumption is that the district would assume that cost over time, and that gives us time to do that. My hope and expectation would be that people will certainly see the value of what that position is bringing, both in terms of the benefits to students and staff, but also, as was referenced earlier, the opportunity and more capacity to actually go out and seek other kinds of funding. You know, we're finding, and certainly, the stadium project is one example of it. This Colonial Connections project is another, that there are people in the community, there are businesses, there are people who want to support our work, even with significant financial investment. If you have the right kind of project and the right kind of program, and they feel that their dollars are going to be invested wisely, there are people who will open their wallets and support our schools. And it's incumbent upon us to find ways to do that in responsible ways that connect and are within our goals and strategic priorities. So my hope would be that this is a position that is here for a long time. It is different and it's new, but I'm confident that Dr. Lozot will do an excellent job in making that work as we go forward over the next few years.
Further questions or comments relating to the school department budget? Mr. Sheikh.
Sheikh Sheikh, Precinct Ten. Just a couple of clarifications, Mr. Moderator. On the line item A1 and A3 on page 49, there is about a three-quarter of a million-dollar increase in the Administrative Central Office and AIDS. It's about, you know, give or take 7% increase, whereas the, you know, in the teachers and nurses, it's about 4.6% increase. So is it just the increase because of some compensation issues or negotiation? Or is it really, we are adding a number of people there because there was an imbalance? The second question in that regard, I mean, the second item is line item C1, where there is actually a significant reduction in the special education, year-over-year, this year being 796,000, 97,000, so it's almost $800,000. Is it a trend, or is it really some sort of funding we are receiving or movement of funds? I apologize if you have already explained and I did not understand. I do recognize you have done a great job putting side notes and footnotes. But I think it just required a little bit of understanding how these numbers are playing and what that would be, you know, the play in the future, if that's a trend. Thank you.
Response, Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Yes, so with respect to, I guess, going in the order here, the category A1, which is a category of administrative personnel, principals and assistant principals, there was an accounting change there that accounts for $112,000 of that increase. And it was basically, we had a staffing position in the category A2, previously, the Assistant Special Education Director, who's now no longer in that unit. And so we moved those budget dollars upwards. So that accounts for more than half of that particular increase. And then, we are in the collective bargaining process with the Unit B Assistant Principals. So we have a set aside for that. And then also, for any raises that would be negotiated with non-union personnel. With respect to A3, paraprofessionals, you can see in the notes there that we have, that group of staff, basically, depending on their job by contract, is getting a rate increase of between 2 and 2.5% for the upcoming year, in addition to step costs as well. And then, finally, with respect to special education tuitions, while they have generally, in terms of our enrollment, been steady or slightly decreasing, which is positive news, we're able to keep more students in district. That effectively is, we're bringing that budget down because we have, we're taking surplus funds from this year and able to carry it forward through the Circuit Breaker Fund and then apply those to next year's tuition. So there is, that's really kind of the accounting rationale for that particular C1 category. So there's really two things going on. There's moderation, a little bit on enrollment, but mainly, the surplus from the current year is flowing through there. And then we're just buying down those next year's tuition budgets. budgets.
Further questions or comments, Mr. German?
Max German, Precinct Eight. I would just like to say that I wholeheartedly endorse this budget, and I also wanted to thank the school committee, Dr. Sawyer, and all those who had a part going into this. As someone who just graduated from, not that far removed from Shrewsbury High School, I can attest to the forward measures being taken and just the absolute superior education that I think we have, and I think the hard work that you guys do is the reason why we're such a forward-leaning community on education, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, any further questions or comments relating to the school budget? Yes, ma'am. Oh, Mrs. Goldman, I thought it was the person behind you.
I apologize for adding an extra question, but it was in my list. Just quickly, about charter schools, and I know that we've improved on lowering the charter schools, but could you just tell me as far as the funding in the next year's budget or the latest budget, how much we've had to pay out on charter schools, which would include perhaps whatever they call the reimbursement stuff? Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Sure, I could offer information for the current fiscal year, then I might ask Mr. Mizikar if he's still there about the cherry sheet, hiding behind the podium, for fiscal year cherry sheet with respect to those tuition dollars. But for the current year, there is, and it's in your booklet in terms of the enrollment trend, but 28 students who are attending charter schools. Total tuition this year is $403,268, and then we are getting some state aid to offset those costs to the amount of $24,828. So the net cost to the town for the current school year is $378,440. And I do have next year's figures, they're quite similar. If you don't have them, I have them here.
FY '20, the 26, 060 with the, that reflects the House for charter tuition reimbursement.
Yeah, I think I have it here. Okay, so what I have for the latest charter school reimbursement, now there's a variety of different proposals, of course, anywhere between the House budget, aid of $26,000, the Senate Ways and Means has over $40,000 reimbursement, so that's an unsettled piece yet, of course, to be determined. And then with respect to the projected tuition for charter schools, $425,000, $427,000. So again, we're looking at a net of about $400,000 charge.
Further questions or comments regarding the school department budget? Okay, there being none, gonna go back to the Finance Committee? I'm sorry?
Is there operating support?
Did we, I'm sorry, we didn't do operating support yet. Give me a moment, folks. Turn, if you will, to page 50, which is the operating support and grand total pages. Thank you, Mr. Pitney. And are there any questions or comments relating to the operating support budget on page 50? Yes, sir?
Hi, Stefan Hess, Precinct Eight. Being a footnote guy too, what would the grand total budget be if the excluded enterprises were included?
Mr. Mizikar? Further questions or comments on the operating support budget? Follow-up, go ahead.
Stefan Hess, Precinct Eight. So quickly, that's, it's about $10 million over from last year. So that percentage is more than the two and a half, isn't it not, or am I misunderstanding that?
Mr. Mizikar?
It's about, it's 6.53 percent year-over-year holistic comparison.
Further questions or comments on the operating support budget? Ms. Deering?
Martha Deering, Precinct Four. I've noticed a significant drop in the cost for the Employee Assistance Program. Having been an EAP professional for many years in the past, that's a really low number, especially for a town this size.
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
The Employee Assistance Program is now, we don't use a separate entity to provide those services, and the funding is accounted for as part of our relationship with our general liability insurance provider, so it's actually captured within the cost of the general insurance line, the 888-620. We've actually, I'm rather proud of the enhancements that we've recently made with those new services.
Further questions or comments? Okay, folks, this is your chance, if you want to go back on any of the other departmental budgets, beginning on page 33 and ending on page 50. Any questions at all? Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Gonat.
Day Dean Gonat, Precinct Two. At Quinn 35, when we were talking about enrollment, sorry, back to the school budget for a second, have there been actual numbers of students that have come out of Quinn 35 as opposed to what the projected numbers are, and are we using that towards the projections for the two apartment complexes coming up?
Response, Mr. Collins?
Sure, so currently, there are 18 students enrolled, grades pre-K through 12, who live at Lakeway Commons. And I could speak to the projections, I think Mrs. Los might be able to do that.
Mrs. Los?
Thank you. The projections were between 16 and 30 students, so Quinn 35 is fully leased out, we're well below the projections, and we've been using the projections moving forward to investigate the 4B project at the Point Hills Farm, as well as the pending Edmire Drive-In project. So we've been working closely with the school department on those projections, and they are panning out the way that we're seeing them.
Further questions or comments relating to any of the sections of the municipal or school department budget? Okay, there being none, Mr. Pitney, Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 11 unanimously.
Okay. And just to take us back for summary purposes, although there were no amendments to any of the line items in the budget, and so there's no need to move to amend any of the numbers, Mr. DiPaolo, would you just restate the motion under Article 11, the summary part, the dollar figures?
Just the top?
Yeah.
I move that the town raise the sum of $120,394,398 in the following manner. Transfer from free cash, $416,916. Transfer from sewer surplus, $766,311. Transfer from water enterprise, $1,615,932. Transfer from stormwater enterprise, $105,422. Transfer from Title V loan repayment account, $10,269. And except from Municipal Light, $438,600.
Okay. There are no further questions or comments with respect to the motion under Article 11. This motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 11 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Folks, I know that was a long discussion, thanks for your indulgence, thanks for listening so well to everyone who presented and for, to the presenters for taking us through all those numbers. Just take a few seconds to, take a deep breath, stretch your legs if you like, and I want, before we resume with Article 12, I want to admit that I made an egregious oversight in my opening remarks when we were talking about all the great people who have served this town. We also want to say thank, a great expression of thanks by all of us to Selectman Moira Miller, who finished four years on the Board of Selectmen this month, and thank you, Moira, for your service. And thank you, Sandy, for reminding me about Erin, when you mentioned Erin Kinzano, two dedicated public service who served long terms in office, and both of them are continuing on as Town Meeting Representatives, so that's the good part. Okay, please don't everyone plan on going home yet, we have a little bit more time to go before our curfew, and I'd like to get a few more articles accomplished before we close up for tonight and continue till tomorrow. Article 12, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 12.
Wednesday, sorry. The motion under Article 12 has been moved and seconded, that the town raise the sum of $2254,969 to operate the Municipal and Residential Solid Waste Collection Processing and Disposal Services Enterprise. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 12. By a six-to-one vote, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, six-to-one.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 12? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 12 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion passes. Article 13?
I move the printed motion under Article 13?
Second.
The printed motion under Article 13 has been moved and seconded, that the town transfer the sum of $5,588,710 from the sewer surplus account to the line items described on page 52 of the booklet to operate the sewer system from the sewer surplus account. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 13.
Questions or comments with regard to Article 13? Sewer surplus account. Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 13 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 14, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 14?
Second.
The printed motion under Article 14 has been moved and seconded, that the town transfer the sum of $1,092,755 from the sewer surplus account, $400,000 from the inflow and infiltration fund, and $210,245, $210,245 from the accounts listed on page 53 to fund the fiscal 2020 capital investment program for the expenditures that are listed on page 53, with a total of $1,703,000. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 14.
Mr. Mizikar, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to note to Town Meeting members that in previous years, separate articles would have, had been provided for the various capital investments, so there was individual articles for inflow and infiltration sewer pump station. We attempted to put all these capital improvements together, but in a consolidated form, but we stand ready to answer questions on any individual aspects of the plan as you see fit.
Any questions or comments with respect to the capital expenditure account for fiscal 2020? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a two-thirds vote to pass because it involves the possible acquisition of, I'm sorry, it involves the possible borrowing of funds.
Acquisition of land.
And acquisition, I'm sorry, an acquisition of land. The, we need two-thirds vote, we'll go according to our bylaws and try a voice vote first. If there's any doubt as to the sufficiency of the vote, then we'll immediately proceed to a standing vote. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 14 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes by a two-thirds vote. Article 15?
I move the printed motion under Article 15?
Second.
The printed motion under Article 15 has been moved and seconded, that the town raise the sum of $1,603,804 from departmental receipts in the Water Department, and the sum of $885,957 to be transferred from the accounts that are shown at the bottom of page 54 and the top of page 55, and appropriate those funds to the uses enumerated on page 55 under capital investments. This is known as the Water Department Capital Budget for, within the Water Services Enterprise Account for Fiscal 2020. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 15.
And Mr. Mizikar, any particular comments you'd like to make?
Just these capital projects and plans for the Water Department for the upcoming year.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 15? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass? We're gonna require a two-thirds vote to pass since it involves the potential acquisition of land or easements. Again, we'll try a voice vote first, if there's any doubt as to the sufficiency of the vote, we'll move to a standing vote. Would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 15 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes by a two-thirds vote. Article 16?
I move the printed motion under Article 16?
Second.
The printed motion under Article 16 has been moved and seconded, that the town raise the sum of $250,000 from departmental receipts from the stormwater capital budget and appropriate those funds to pay for the fiscal 2020 capital investment project relating to drainage. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 16.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 16? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a two-thirds vote to pass since it involves the potential acquisition of land or easements by the town, we'll try a voice vote first according to our bylaw. All those in favor of the printed motion under Article 16 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no? And the motion passes by a two-thirds vote. Article seventeen, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article seventeen.
Second.
Okay, the printed motion under Article seventeen has been moved and seconded, that the town raise seventeen thousand four hundred dollars from the tax levy and appropriate that amount, and transfer two million four hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars from free cash to fund the costs associated with the adoption of an omnibus capital budget for fiscal 2020 as enumerated on pages, on page fifty-seven of the book. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article seventeen.
Questions or comments with respect to the omnibus capital budget under Article seventeen? Mr. Scott?
Steve Scott, Precinct Nine. Looking just for a little clarification on the police station and municipal campus feasibility. I assume that's a study for a quarter million dollars?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
That is correct.
Further questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. Sorry, this is McSweeney.
Kathy McSweeney, Precinct Eight. I have a question on the underground storage tanks at three of the schools. How many tanks are there, and has the, there been any testing to see if there's any contamination that could result in additional charges or fees?
Response? Mr.?
Baldinger.
Mr. Baldinger. Can we have a mic down front?
There are four underground fuel oil storage tanks. There's two at the high school, one at Floral Street School, and one at Oak Middle School. And as of right now, there is, we're not aware of any contamination in soils.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article seventeen? Ms. Hollenback, sorry.
Lisa Hollenback, Precinct Nine. The hundred thousand for the cemetery planning, is this any money that would be recouped with cemetery receipts in the future? Is there any recouping of that money? And can you explain maybe a little bit about the cemetery planning?
Response? Mrs. Snell.
The cemetery planning is for developing plans for, across the street from the current cemetery, to expand burial space. So there will be, we will make some money selling cemetery lots in the future?
Further questions or comments with respect to Article seventeen? Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Conlon, Precinct Ten. With the playground improvements, I'm just curious if that's Dean Park? Or are there particular playgrounds that are earmarked and what type of improvements it entails?
Response, Mrs. Snell?
That is for, for Dean Park. It'll be phase one of doing some renovations and making it more accessible.
Further questions or comments on Article seventeen? Yes, sir. Mr. Vertigliano.
Chris Vertigliano, Precinct Seven. I have two questions regarding the replacement of the four-marked, the four-marked vehicles. The first question is, are these the police interceptor SUVs, or are they the sedans?
Response? Chief Hester. Sorry, Chief Hester.
Those are the SUV interceptors.
Okay. Hold that mic, Chris.
Okay, and then the follow-up is, do the Mark Cruisers, do they, when we get them, does that include the lighting, the radios, the communication devices, the laptops? Is it a totally outfitted vehicle?
Chief Hester.
It is fully outfitted. Some of the equipment is transferred, depending on the usable life.
Thanks, Chief.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article seventeen? Mr. Sheikh.
Rashid Sheikh, Precinct Ten. Just kind of trying to get the clarification on this municipal campus feasibility, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is it really the feasibility study of the town hall and the police station? I understand that police station really needs some renovation, but is it really both buildings trying to understand how to improve them? And is it like a committee setup for that? And secondly, the, the oil tanks, well, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. I mean, these tanks have been there for a while. We have, we are now on gas, I guess. So these tanks are, they, I mean, is it, I mean, why are we getting them out now and spending two hundred and sixty-eight? Why didn't we get a plan before? What's going on?
Mr. Mizikar?
So the townwide, or excuse me, the police station and municipal campus feasibility study is primarily focused on the initial phases of planning to see if there is any possibility for expanding or improving the existing police facility, and if not, what are our options and potential areas where a new facility could be constructed? And then it, while we have those professionals on site, we look to gain some economies on a smaller project to review general space programming and planning in those other two buildings. So a much less comprehensive review of the town hall and senior center. But as, you know, the town staffing grows and changes, I'll just remind you that the town hall includes school central admin and municipal employees, and, so we're going to take a look at that to see if there's any ways to improve existing conference spaces. We're constantly running up against the ability to provide those things on a day-to-day basis. So it'll be a much less intense look as, in comparison to the police station, but we're just looking to leverage those consultants while we already have them on a bigger project. And then regarding the oil tanks, we are actually required by the general laws, once we abandon the use or stop using the fuel source that is stored within those tanks, that we have to remove them. We're a little overdue on these. We want to reduce our liability as the tanks do start to age, get them out of the ground, so we don't have further costs in the future.
Further questions regarding Article seventeen? Ms. Hollenback.
Melissa Hollenback, Precinct Nine. In regard to the oil tanks, is there any funding for, after they've been removed, for refurbishing, regressing, playground, whatever? Is this the cost?
Yes, it's, it's the cost. It's our, it's our budgeted number, and we're, you know, out to bid, and hopefully we're able to complete, you know, the comprehensive project.
Further questions or comments on Article seventeen? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article seventeen, please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no? And the motion passes unanimously. Article eighteen, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article eighteen.
Second.
Printed motion under Article eighteen has been moved and seconded, that the town transfer eighteen thousand dollars from the sale of cemetery lots account to the Cemetery Department for the care improvement and embellishment or enlargement of the cemetery. This would leave a balance in the sale of lots account, the information says, of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article eighteen.
Questions or comments with respect to Article eighteen? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article eighteen, please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no? And the motion passes unanimously. Article nineteen, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article nineteen.
Second.
The printed motion under Article nineteen has been moved and seconded, that the town appropriate, that raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar to pay departmental bills contracted in a prior year. Finance Committee recommendation?
I'm assuming that there are no bills to pay for this year, so based on that, the Finance Committee does not recommend Article nineteen.
Mr. Mizikar, you want to say a few words about this?
Yeah, so there are no bills of a prior year to be paid through this article?
Questions or comments with respect to Article nineteen? Okay, this, this requiring a majority vote to defeat, would require a four-fifths vote to pass if there were any money that was going to be appropriated to pay for bills contracted in a prior year. Would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article nineteen, please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion is defeated unanimously. Article twenty. Folks, it's, it's ten eighteen. I'll, I'm here at your pleasure, at least until ten-thirty tonight. We have a series of petition articles beginning with Article twenty. I was hoping we could get through at least one or two of them before we adjourn tonight, but I'll let you folks determine what our schedule should be. Shall we move on? Is there a motion? Mr. Byrne?
Kevin Byrne, Precinct Six. We're now into all sorts of petitions. Those of you who are new, probably unaware of the fact that these have a tendency to go on and on, and occasionally on. I respectfully suggest that if I made a motion to adjourn, that we'd all decide to go home and come home real fresh.
Okay, it's, I'm advised by Town Manager Mizikar that this auditorium is available to us next on Wednesday, May twenty-second, at seven P.M. There's been a motion made to adjourn this meeting to Wednesday, May twenty-second, at seven P.M. And it's been seconded as well. If there are no questions, would all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, say no? And the motion passes. We are adjourned until Wednesday evening at seven P.M. Thank you and good night. And watch out for those exits. It's that, the exit that's closed may be your own.